It is actually time to begin our meetings and I knew at the Galvelle that our general counsel, our board counsel would jump in at the Galvelle. I knew you would. Wasn't concerned at all. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our work session for the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And particularly welcomed because it is 2:22:22 today. Yes, it is 2:22:22. So I was going to say, if you were thinking about getting married? Just saying. Okay, just putting that out there, just saying. All right, let's go ahead and start with our roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Angela Taylor. Vice President Diane Nicolet. I am here. Trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Rodriguez. And Trustee Smith is delayed.
Trustee Smith is delayed. She had something going on with her, a really good thing with her brother. So she wanted to put it on the record that she'll be here in about, she said, probably within the hour. So we'll go ahead and take that. So you won't be in a lone land over there too long, Trustee Church. I see you looking a little lost without your wing, girl. I know, I know. You're there, JJ. I see you. We appreciate it. He appreciates you too, I'm sure.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Just go ahead and stand. I'll leave us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right. We're going to get into our action to adopt the agenda. Any public comment on the agenda? None? Okay, we'll see if there's no public comment. So we're going to, I'm looking for a motion from the board if that is your desire to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by our clerk. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Rodriguez, seeing no discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by standing on high. Opposition? All right, the motion carries. If the record is unanimous and just let me point out as we discussed at a policy meeting, then that is back on the agenda and then we'll deal with it in the way as guided by our counsel when we get back to a policy committee meeting. We'll talk about that. So it's back on the agenda. So there we have it. All right, back, let's jump into our items for presentation and discussion and possible action. This is regarding the district's fiscal year budget next year. That's next school year, '22, '23. It's our budget process and the status revenue and expenditure estimates for the general fund, recommended next steps for the budget process and possible action to direct the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board specific budget issues, items or other changes to the district's fiscal year '22, '23 budget process. And of course, this is for possible action. Our CFO and budget directors are before us.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So thank you very much again for seeing us here this morning. The purpose of today's presentation is to give you a preliminary budget number for the general fund, where we stand after we've updated the current fiscal year '22 budget. By updating revenues based on the per pupil funding we'll receive next fiscal year, we will update costs using known salary and benefit increases that we've negotiated with our collective bargaining units for the next year. And there are three we've come to conclusion for. We'll update costs in terms of contract increases and other known non-personnel increases as well. So we'll provide you with, again, that preliminary budget number that really starts the budget discussions, the heavy-duty budget discussions. So if that preliminary budget number showed a deficit, then the board would unfortunately have the, kind of, that would set the stage for board direction on what kind of cost reductions or analysis they would like to see. If that preliminary budget number shows a surplus, then we can talk about, again, a process going forward in March where we consider needs identified by departments, board input and so forth. So deficit obviously leads to a different kind of path than a surplus, but we will get into that. And Jeff and I will continue to kind of tag-team this, switching off on slides. Again, just a reminder, our per pupil funding for fiscal year '23 goes up a whole 1.3%. So as you probably detected, money is tight, but we'll get into that. And we'll try to contain this discussion to two hours. We'll try to be done by 12 because we know you have a PLC discussion that follows. But again, we want to make this interactive too. So if you have questions along the way, absolutely ask any questions you may have. So with that, our agenda is pretty simple. We'll go through some preliminary information and then on our item three, we will give you the assumptions and the analysis that went into development of that preliminary budget number that Jeff will share with you. And at the end, we'll talk about public engagement and close the meeting. Oh, here we go. Okay, so just as a reminder, all of our budget decisions really should closely link to our strategic plan, our response to recovery bridge plan. That's really important. So any budget changes that you may talk about today, March or April, really should link back to any of the five goals that you see and that are contained in the response recovery plan and more closely linked to the objectives underneath each goal. As we've talked about before, a key, key assumption for the budget is enrollment that drives our revenues. Because again, we know that our revenues now can be very simply estimated, at least the state revenues. It's basically our base per pupil funding number times enrollment. It's that simple. So this is a key variable and it also drives our staffing allocations, our teacher allocations at schools and other allocations as well. So there are, as we've talked about before, some very basic drivers of enrollment changes. Those include demographic changes, the prospect of new development in the region. And also, we've seen changes over the last year, several years related to COVID-19. You know, more people doing homeschooling and other factors there listed and shown as well. So for '22, '23, like we always do, we work with our school demographer, Randy Vaxley, in terms of coming up with an estimated enrollment for next fiscal year. There have been years when sometimes he's projected moderate or slight increases in enrollment. We've kind of backed off to be conservative and assumed flat enrollment. For the '22, '23 school year, he has actually projected very flat enrollment, just a decrease of nine students from the current school year. So that is what we would like to go with. That is one of, again, key budget assumptions in our budget and that's what we would like to move forward with in terms of staffing allocations unless the board's had different thoughts. So flat enrollment isn't a bad thing necessarily. It provides stability in terms of teacher allocations in our budget. We did want to point out some factors in the short to intermediate term though that we have started to build into our four-year financial plan that you'll see that you also need to be aware of. And you know, the first one shown there are charter schools. And not for next fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, fiscal year '24, we are getting word of at least two major expansions that charter schools are considering and that most likely would have a significant impact, up to 1,000 students that might choose to go to a charter school two years from now. So that's something that we need to keep in mind as we build a budget. In addition to that, as you know, housing continues to rise to incredible levels here in Washoe County. And there's just a lack of affordable housing and what that has meant is it has pushed younger, larger, lower-wage families out of Washoe into neighboring counties. And so that kind of change to the affordability of housing in the region over the last 10 years is resulting in less school-aged children coming to Washoe County School District. Along with that, we're seeing again declining birth rates. And so this is nothing new for developed countries in the world or the United States as a whole, but Washoe County is also seeing just lower birth rates, smaller families. So we're not seeing as many children coming into newer grades and we'll show that in the next slide than we used to. The only real offset to those kind of negative trends are development plans in the county. And so there are some large developments that are slated to occur over the next five years. I've listed Talis or Daybreak. That's in the Hidden Valley, kind of north-south Meadows area. There's also, of course, developments going on in North Valleys and Spanish Springs. So to the extent we see new development, that will help. But again, we'll see smaller numbers of school-aged children coming out of those developments that we did 20 years ago. And it's not just a little, you know, in terms of a slight change in the number of school-aged children. It's a significant reduction in the number of students generated per hundred households than we used to see. So that gives you a snapshot of enrollment and I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk about what we are now referring to as enrollment bubble.
Thanks, Mark. So on this slide, the enrollment bubble, the district has had a cluster of grade levels. There are these orange bars on this graph here where enrollment is significantly higher than in other grades. Next year, these students will be high schoolers and then in FY '24, they will start graduating and being replaced with kindergarteners who, you know, with declining birth rates, we're projecting those incoming classes of kindergarteners to be around 4,400 students. So at the very least, over the next, or from FY '24 through FY '27, each of those years will have at least a 602 student decrease in our enrollment. That's before any impacts with charter schools, any type of development that might bring enrollment growth, any other factors. This is just what our enrollment looks like now with incoming kindergartner classes. Then on this next slide, we tried to quantify the impact of this enrollment bubble. So starting in FY '24, if we assume our same per pupil funding amount because we don't know what next legislative session will bring, that'll be a $4.4 million revenue decrease just due to this enrollment bubble. And then the next year, we see another significant decrease to enrollment and so on for those four years while we get out of this enrollment bubble. So this slide here puts it in perspective what the future holds for enrollment and state revenues. Luckily, we're in flat enrollment for FY '23, but we're going to have to address this in the future. So moving on to the next couple of slides, we're going to go over our general fund revenue estimate. So we took this flat enrollment number of the 62,166 students and then our state revenues are, it's average daily enrollment, just not one day's enrollment or count day enrollment. This is the average daily enrollment through the entire year. And we see swings from quarter to quarter. So we try to adjust for that in this second number here of 61,923 students for our average daily enrollment. We then take that number, multiply it by our per pupil amount and that's how we get the $453 million of total base per pupil funding from the state. There's also fixed amounts in the state revenue for local special education. That was the amount under the old plan that we would transfer from our general fund over to the special education fund to cover the revenue shortfall in that fund.
Could I ask a question?
I'm sorry, it's Washington side. Yes, please, go ahead.
So I just want to be clear. The funding is based on the projected average daily enrollment, not the count day enrollment.
So Trustee Church, that's somewhat correct. So we take the count day enrollment and then we try to adjust for, based on that number, what typical trends in enrollment are through the year to get to the average daily enrollment. So it's based off the count day, just taking, here's the trend throughout the year.
But what do we get funded under?
The average daily enrollment. You're welcome. And then this final number here is the transportation amount. So again, another fixed amount from the state that says we've historically spent $25.9 million on transportation. So they make sure that we have that amount in the funding model. So our total state funding is $524.9 million. Then on this next slide, these are our other general fund revenues. So if you recall in prior presentations, we've had that pie chart that has the 98.5% state-funded. These are those little slivers of other funding. So we have half million dollars in investment earnings, just over $3 million in indirect cost revenue. We are projecting a decrease in our indirect cost revenue with SR1 funds coming to an end and a decrease in our indirect cost rate. We have, the other revenue has like rental, rental fees, field trip reimbursements, some salary and benefit reimbursements and other minor items. And then we also have a small portion of federal revenue totaling just under $7.5 million. So this bottom table here shows that our total FY '23 general fund revenues will be $532.39 million. And this next slide here is just that pie chart we talked about a moment ago. So we'll move on to expenditures.
Dr. Ching, that, please. I was wondering if you might mention it. So transportation specifically, when we look on this, the previous slide on the total, is transportation impacted, for example, by the fact that we are, we have less bus drivers and we're having to make different kinds of concessions? So will that number decrease accordingly?
Not for FY '23. That number is in the funding bill, so that will be our number. But in future years, they'll make adjustments for what we historically spent on transportation. So that could impact future funding.
Just to get a little bit more specific, they take the four-year average of our costs and then multiply it by 85% and then multiply it by an inflation factor that we're talking about in the admission on school funding. So it's a, but it, as we spend less on transportation because of vacancies, you're right. That will lower that number over time. Again, it's a four-year average and will be reimbursed less than what we used to when we were fully staffed.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on to expenses. This slide here is just, again, a summary of how we build our general fund expenditure budget. So we take the FY '22 budget, roll it up for known salary and benefit increases, contract or inflation adjustments, any other things that have been approved. And that's how we get to the estimated preliminary deficit or surplus, which is what we're here to talk about today. And then as we develop the rest of the budget, we'll look at items that were requested by departments, any type of reorganizations, review historical spending patterns for opportunities for savings, get everyone, the board's input, and that's how we get to our final budget. So again, here, deficit or surplus today, and then we have a couple of months to go to get to that final budget. So two main factors we have playing into our expenditure projections are turnover savings and vacancy savings. So I'm going to start with turnover savings and Mark will get into vacancy savings in a moment. But the preliminary, for the preliminary budget each year, when we take a snapshot of all our employees and positions, we compare it to the prior year and there's typically a difference. So we have the same amount of positions, but we have a different cost. And what that is, is the cost is lower and that's because if we have a more senior employee who resigns or retires, a lower-paid employee with less experience comes in and that savings there is what is turnover savings. If we don't have an employee come into that position and it's vacant, we budget it at the entry-level step, assuming that's what the employee will come in at when that position's filled. But that savings there is our turnover savings. So...
Can I stop? So this is really inside-baseball kind of budget stuff. This is pretty darn technical. We've debated about how far in the weeds we go with the board, but we think it's important because as Jeff will show you, without some unique anomalous kind of savings that we're seeing, we would be in a far worse situation. So we thought it was important to kind of march you through this budget technical stuff so that you know how we prepare the budget to know how we got to the place we're going to share. So a couple of you looked a little quizzical, so I just, including Anthony Hall here. So I just wanted to explain, this is pretty technical, but it's what we do and it's really important to how we got to the number we're going to get to.
Thank you for recognizing that in my face. I'm trying really hard to stay...
You know, without math.
I know. I can look really bright when I... Back to that. So when you say turnover, a great explanation. That does not include Diane's a teacher, now she's a dean. That's not considered turnover.
So that is included in there. So it's all the positions that had changes in employees for it. So whether an employee gets promoted or they retire, resign, it's any of those changes, those are all included in that general turnover savings bucket. You're welcome. Thanks, JJ. So on this slide here, there's, for the, I'll get into the number later, but it was about $6 million in turnover savings that we've experienced this year and that's significantly higher than normal. Usually, it's in the high $2 million, so like mid to high $3 million range. And that's due to two main factors. So that's more retirements than we've seen in previous years and the impacts of the great resignation. So here we mentioned the aging of our workforce. And so this chart here, we're trying to show that our workforce is aging. So this is our regular employees, so substitutes, we're not, our coaches, you know, hourly assignments, we're not including here. These are just our regular full-time positions. And as you can see, the average age of our workforce is increasing, which then makes sense for why we're seeing more significant turnover savings. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay.
This is hard to predict of who's going to retire, who's going to resign. We do have a million-dollar contra, which we talked about at the last meeting, for turnover savings. But again, we're seeing higher-than-average turnover savings compared to prior years.
So I want to recap this, do it one more time, just to make sure people understand. So this is what budgeters do. They look at every position in an agency and they are going to look at the current salary and benefits of that position based on who is sitting in that position and then project them out for the COLAs that you've awarded and the step increase for that employee. So this is not unique to the school district. This is just what everyone does. So in the example you gave, we know who was in the dean position last year and how much they made. And now, if that turns over and there's a new person in that slot, we compare who is in the dean position for fiscal year '23, if we know it, right? So we're doing a side-by-side comparison of each position, what they make in the current year and what the expectation is for next year. And so as Jeff said, if there's a veteran person in that position who retires, they were probably much further along in the salary range for dean than the person that replaces that incumbent. And so there's a one-time savings you get because that replacement person is making less than what the current incumbent is, if that makes sense at all. So we're doing that for the 8,000 positions, not manually, of course, but the 8,000 positions in the district's budget, we are doing that. It's a side-by-side comparison of what we're paying today versus what we think we'll pay in fiscal year '23 based on turnover, people moving either between positions or retiring or resigning.
Thank you. I can imagine. How many pages is that spreadsheet?
It's not a spreadsheet. It's a, yeah, it's a program.
It's a program.
Yeah, and business plus.
Logarithms and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I know this is like rolling the dice and it's expertise and it's historical and all the variables you put together. So when this budget goes in for its final, which is June 3rd?
June 8th.
June 8th. How, what do you typically anticipate from a percentage-wise in personnel costs that will change? Because as you said, things, it's a moving target.
Yeah, so we have a, we anticipate about just over a million dollars in the turnover savings, again, because it's hard to predict. This year, again, was significantly higher than we thought it was going to be and, you know, we'll continue with that million-dollar projection. Just, again, it's hard to project and if it doesn't materialize next year and we went higher than that million dollars, then we could find ourselves in a situation where we're going to be short on our budget because we overestimated that savings.
So I can safely assume that, I, no, I don't even assume, I know. A lot of discussion goes into a comfortable level of assurance in the number. I mean, you get a lot of input.
Correct. Yeah, it's, yes. Jeff and I talk daily on these kinds of numbers. And we did factor in a higher turnover savings amount in the '23 budget based on what we actually see in terms of people who occupy the position today versus last year. So, and it goes the other way too. Like, we may have assumed for the '22 budget, a vacant, you know, the position was vacant. And so as Jeff said, that was budgeted at the entry-level step. If someone comes in at a higher level, then that's a negative, if you will, to the turnover savings. So it all nets out to a number that we'll share with you. But we are seeing, again, greater turnover of positions, which generates greater turnover savings that we have booked for the '23 preliminary budget number. Just going forward, yes, it's very hard to project this. So that's one aspect of looking at personnel costs.
Okay, we have a, we have a...
I'm sorry, we have more questions.
You're getting ready to move on. Is that, wait, no, I have red lights over here. So we'll go to a clerk panel, because you were in and out, in and out. Now you're in, and then Trustee Rodriguez.
Well, I want to thank you guys so much because this just makes sense to me. And I also, and I know you answered this, but just say it again. So in what you're doing is you're comparing the, not that, not the employee to the employee. You're comparing the...
Position.
Thank you. Position, position, wherever, however it goes. Thank you.
Who was in the position last year versus who is in the position this year? And what their, what the variance between two payments are.
Yes. Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So I have two questions. I guess I'll start with one. I do understand the whole turnover and salary savings. I get that. And I guess pardon me if I've missed it, but with, I guess as of right now, we're looking at a $6 million savings?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll give you a slide on that, yeah.
Okay, so you're going to get to a point where that money is going to be reallocated?
Well, again, so keep in mind, base per pupil funding is going up 1.3%. That's not enough to even cover step increases of 2%, nor the COLAs that we've negotiated. So we almost start off in a deficit situation based on that very minimal increase in base per pupil funding. This helps us get to a, closer to a balanced budget.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. And I guess my second question. Do we have any positions within the school district aside from our unions and whatnot? Is there any positions that get like a bonus, end-of-year bonus or principals or anything like that that get some sort of stipend or...
So in the collective bargaining agreements we've negotiated that you've approved, there have been bonuses awarded, but not an end-of-year kind of true-up bonus, no?
Okay, so like, no, no, the COVID stuff, outside of the unions, like are there principals or area superintendents or department heads that get some sort of bonus for performance or anything like that?
No, there's no performance paid here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, exactly. Good, please.
Okay, so that was turnover savings. It's just kind of a one-time, again, snapshot and comparison, position by position of the cost to occupy that position. In addition to that, every year, we have vacancy savings, which is the next slide. So we've talked about this before too. And I'm sorry, this again is inside-baseball, highly technical stuff, but it's important to kind of brief you on what we're seeing because it does impact the budget. So again, as an organization as large as we are, we can't fill, have every position filled every day of the fiscal year. It's impossible, right? So we have... So we have, given an agency this size, we have people leave the agency to go to other agencies or just retirements or resignations, and it takes a while to fill those positions. And so there are, as you can see, different approaches agencies have based on this fact. Some agencies in this area, for example, do not budget for vacancy savings. And so they will just let those vacancy savings roll forward at the end of the year and then revert to their general fund balance, right? So they never account for any vacancy savings. They know, there's no way they can spend as much as they budgeted for personnel costs, barring overtime or comp time. But assuming they have control of that, again, they're going to budget like everyone, every position's occupied every day of the fiscal year, which we know won't happen. So they just let those savings roll to the end of the fiscal year into their fund balance. Other agencies do account for some level of vacancy savings through a contra account like we do. But it's at an institutional kind of level. We don't go down to every school and every department to say, we think you're going to have vacancy savings of $1,000. We don't do that. Other agencies have historically, especially in tough times. They will peg a vacancy savings target by department. We've never done that. And I think that's really kind of questionable to do that. It sets up the wrong incentives, but, but other agencies do do that. So again, we're in the middle. We budget some level of vacancy savings at an organization-wide budget account to account for vacancy savings. And this is something we started to do in the fiscal year '19 budget. The one cautionary thing we, we really want to emphasize is we want to have some buffer between what we estimate in terms of budgeted vacancy savings and what we actually achieve. Because if we start to overestimate vacancies and then we actually fill those positions faster and have fewer vacancies, period, we will be overbudgeted, which again is a misdemeanor. So we would then have to kind of cut back on filling jobs mid-year if we had done that. And, and we could be in a real world of hurt if we overestimated, got over our skis in terms of what we estimated in, in terms of vacancy savings. Does that make sense? So if we estimated vacancy savings at $10 million, that's a net reduction of $10 million off of appropriations, off the bottom line. But if we only saw $5 million of vacancy savings, we'd be overbudgeted by $5 million. We don't obviously want to do that.
No. And you mentioned misdemeanors. So to, to help me be totally clear, there is no mechanism to, to revise a budget?
There are, unless you have unanticipated revenues, there is no legal way to increase your budget. You have, you would have to have unanticipated resources in order to adjust upward the budget mid-year.
Okay.
So on the next slide, this is kind of a scary chart. This shows you vacancies in our general fund and special education fund by month, by fiscal year. And so on the left side of the graph, just ignore the purpler, the purplish lines for now. If you look at the blue, green, and somewhat the red, they're all kind of close together, right? So those represent fiscal year '19, '20, and '21. And then, and then you can see beginning about mid-year last year, the green bars, which are fiscal year '21, we started seeing greater vacancies. And so a lot of this has to be related to COVID, right? A lot of, you know, just the stress of trying to cover schools and the stress of the disease. And, and then, you know, the great resignation that we all talk about, we started seeing more and more positions go vacant. And these are snapshots in time. These aren't average numbers, but these are snap, we took snapshots in time at the end of the month, at the end of each month, how many vacancies did we have in the general fund and special education fund? So you can see vacancies start to spike last fiscal year with those green bars. And that has continued on through the current fiscal year, fiscal year '22. The purplish lines on the left for September, October, November, and December, we saw much higher vacancies in those two funds than ever before. And we know that's happening. We know it's happening not just in Washoe County School District. It's happening in lots of school districts, and we know it's happening everywhere in Washoe County. There's just not enough people looking for jobs right now. And so that has made filling any vacancy incredibly difficult. So I'm going to stop there because I think there's a question.
Please. Well, since we're having this as a work session, just as, when you have a question, just, let's just jump in and, and be able to have, have a good exchange and, and so on, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. Good morning, gentlemen. So general fund and special education, this is combined, just to clarify, this is a general?
Yes.
And then it was, do you have at some point a breakdown of special ed specifically?
We would, but, you know, a, a big number here are bus drivers. So, so.
Which is general fund?
They're both. They're both, they're both general fund and special education fund. So it's about 60-40 split between our bus drivers who serve general education students and those serving special education students, the routes. So that's why we combine them so that, you know, big impact here are bus drivers that we, as you know, that we are having trouble filling.
And just going a little further on the special ed fund, teacher assistants, teacher aides, special ed teachers, is that all part of the?
It is.
Built into this?
And that, and that's a critical shortage as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the numbers show in past years, vacancies around 200 or so. If you look at the blue, red, and then, and then some of the green bars early on in the, in the school year. And now we're seeing vacancies of, of roughly 350, or almost double what we used to see in those two funds. So the next chart shows you historically what our vacancy savings have averaged. And again, this is something we started doing in fiscal year '19 as a way to balance the budget and reflect just the fact that we are always going to have vacancy savings. Our current contra or negative credit amount, if you will, in the budget is $6 million, which isn't that far off from fiscal year '19, right, pre-COVID, where things kind of stood. So just to summarize then on vacancy savings, we are analyzing what we think are short-term trends versus long-term trends. And it is very difficult to kind of separate the two. We know that we are struggling to hire bus drivers. We know we are struggling to hire custodians. Is that a short-term issue for the region or is it the beginning of a long-term issue for the region? It's very hard to say for sure, obviously. I do have a quote from a book and, and Emily Ellison actually gave me the name of a whole book that talks about this. But this was all foreseeable by a number of folks who talked about, again, demographic changes, declining birth rates, and how that would impact labor demand versus labor supply, and specifically labor supply, right? We just don't have as many younger workers as we used to. And so this book right here predicted inflation soaring in the 2020s based on labor shortages, which we are seeing, right? So for vacancy savings, we believe holding the contra makes sense right now. We are going to see some of these short-term increased vacancy savings compared to what we did in fiscal year '19 and before. That can be used for one-time needs, which we have many. But we want to be cautious and conservative in how we budget vacancy savings. But we wanted to share this data with you to show you what's happening, what we are seeing. So when we see savings this fiscal year or next related to labor shortages, right now, we're treating it as more one-time situations where we can use it to fund one-time needs like audio enhancement equipment that you authorized last month and so forth. We think it's prudent to wait to book those vacancy savings until we have a, a little bit of a longer-term view after the pandemic hopefully subsides and we see kind of how the labor market looks. When we're comfortable saying this is a new normal, we will certainly share that. But that's probably going to go against, to, to help offset those enrollment reductions Jeff showed you due to the enrollment bubble, right? So we've kind of got that situation. We've got a plan for, if we continue to see vacancy savings, that will help address that. The other thing that we're starting conversations on and may come back to on is just resetting our budget. Our budgeted positions reflect what we actually can hire. So in the case of bus drivers, is it reasonable to continue to budget 300 bus drivers? Or should we just reflect the, the new normal and the reality we have today, which maybe is 250 bus drivers? And then we adjust the budget thereby reducing the contra. So I, again, I know this is really technical stuff, but we wanted to share with you what's going on, how we build the budget, so it's very transparent and open to you and the other stakeholders in the school district so that you know how we get to this preliminary budget number.
I'd say earlier, just jump in when you have a question.
Sure. And now is probably a good time, my little list that I made up. I had an email from a citizen saying that our admin, which is very difficult to define, but our admin increased while our enrollment decreased. Would that be true? And let me follow-on question. In your expertise, do we need to look at cutting that?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't say that's accurate. If, if the person is asking about when our enrollment was 64,000 and it's 63,000 roughly today, no, we did not add administrative positions during that time. We have held firm on the number of administrative positions based on all the needs we have to address COVID and so forth. But no, we did not increase administrative staff. We're always sensitive to that. And new in, in the pupil-centered funding plan, we are capped. Our administrative expenses are capped at a number that we cannot exceed. So that's new, a new statutory restriction we have.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you. Do we need to look, we rely on your expertise. And thank goodness you guys are here because it's well beyond my pay grade. But do we need to look at that in your, in your opinion?
So if we saw a continued long-term downward trend in enrollment, I think it does make sense to look at every corner of the organization. And we will all have to reduce to address those enrollment declines that we are seeing, again, barring enrollment coming out of new development and barring increased state funding. I mean, those are two major offsets we could have that would kind of shore up the budget situation in the long term. But if, if resources fall as a result of long-term enrollment trends, yes, every sliver of the organization will feel it.
And then, moving on, one of my favorite subjects, property tax. Almost a good thing, as us older folks, retirees, now I'm not there yet, but as the retirees pay property tax and/or other taxes, but there's not as many kids in school as a young vibrant. We're a booming vibrant community, but we're not that young vibrant that has lots and lots of kids. So how does that help us?
That's a, that's a good question. We are seeing property taxes increase significantly year over year. I think in the current fiscal year, the state estimated increases to 6%. It's pretty good for property taxes when the residential tax increases are capped at 3%, right? I think we saw 6% the year before. I'm guessing we'll see 6-plus percent going forward. So you're right, as property values increase, property taxes collected don't climb as fast, obviously, but they, they do show growth. However, under the pupil-centered funding plan, those property taxes go to the state. So it will increase the state pool of money for K through 12, at least our share of that. And hopefully, we see a proportionate share of that, but there's no guarantee of that. So it will increase the revenues going into the state education fund, but how that trickles down to Washoe is unknown.
That's, that's significant. I, you told us that before and I'm glad there wasn't a quiz because I had forgot. Segue-ing that into my favorite subject of WC1, if we didn't have WC1, things like school maintenance would have to come out of our general fund. Is that correct? I mean, what do you do when you don't have the money in capital projects?
So school maintenance always has come out of our general fund and will contend, continue to come out of our general fund. WC1 only funds school construction repairs and rehabilitation, not maintenance.
Okay, so repairs, roof leaks, things like that. If we didn't have WC1 and if capital property tax didn't meet that, potentially in the past, would that dip into general fund?
I'm not aware that the general fund made any significant contribution to the capital improvement program before. But theoret, in theory, I guess, that could have been a cost pressure on the general fund, yes.
All right, just trying to clarify. Then, again, I should know this, so don't quiz me, but property tax, when we, so that goes to the state, comes back to us, so it's not limited on how we can spend it in terms of, even though it's property tax, it does not go to capital projects?
So there are two, there are actually two slivers of property tax. And maybe, maybe I confused you by not addressing the second sliver. There's a general operating rate you pay on your property taxes is 75 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. That used to go to our general fund and now goes to the state education fund. There is also a debt rate that you see on your tax bill for schools. That's 38.85 cents per $100 of valuation. That continues to come to us directly, and that is for rollover bonds, the payment of debt service on rollover bonds. So we will continue to see the debt rate come into our coffers.
And that does go up a little bit?
It, it has been going up. We are having to pay our share of Incline Village tax refunds, however.
You just stole my last question.
Sorry. Yep, yep, we are, we are seeing that. We've, we've paid, that fund has paid $2 million in refunds fiscal year to date. We, we expect between $3 and $4 million being paid out of that fund this fiscal year with the remainder over the next several years.
Okay, let's go over that, especially for the audience and/or me and us. There was a lawsuit that has nothing to do with us between Incline Village and Washoe County, and that was settled. And that money, roughly $20 million, I'm thinking.
That's right, 19 and a half.
We take, we take.
Our share.
We take our share of the hit.
The total hit was 54 to 56 million. Our share was 19 and a half million.
Okay.
Our share, quote, in quotes.
Now, that's not money we pay back, but it's money that's decreased in what we get. Is that correct? Am I getting that right?
So the county is netting off the, the property taxes by the, by the school district's share of refunds. So the amount going into the state education fund for the general rate is being reduced by the district's share of refunds processed during that period. And then the debt rate that we get directly is also, those revenues are being netted off by our share, quote-unquote, of the refunds processed during that period. So like I say, fiscal year to date, total refunds out of our property tax debt service fund have been $2 million.
So how, you probably told me, but how long until that's paid off?
I think the way the settlement agreement negotiated by the county and the taxpayers, I think the last year is 2024.
So right at the end of the tunnel?
Mm-hmm.
And then the way you explained it, does Mineral County get a hit on that because it goes into the general revenue? And then they don't get as much either because of Incline Village?
It, the, the netting of revenues are, for the general rate, again, is, is, yes, is impacting the property taxes that are emitted to the state education fund. I think it's fair to say, given the boom we've seen in the state's economy, the unexpected boom, that probably other revenues have more than offset those refunds that were processed that is being netted off the state education fund share. We're seeing in WC1, for instance, sales tax in fiscal year '21 grew 16%. And so far this fiscal year, they're growing at 18%. So there is a local school support tax, a sales tax that goes into the state education fund. We're growing faster than Clark, obviously, but we're seeing good growth in that revenue, probably above what was budgeted. So I think net, 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 everything's going to be okay in terms of the state education fund.
And then how you know these figures down to the decimal is beyond me, but awesome, incredible. And then my only final thing, I think I have just a comment, as an intel analyst, there's always, every single time somebody predicts something, and that gets the headline news because, well, it was predicted and you didn't ask, but, you know, I, I don't put any credence in that book that somebody predicted it because you're always. put any credence in that book that somebody predicted it because you're always going to have experts that analyze it and come up with different predictions. So nobody's got a crystal ball. And so I don't blame, I don't blame the people that predicted otherwise. Let's put it that way. Thank you.
Go ahead, jump in, please.
I guess more of a comment and a question. It's just, it's, it just seems ironic that we, you know, there's so much growth happening in Washoe County. There's, there's development, leaps and bounds. We see in the traffic and yet, you know, from what I'm hearing, we're just not getting in terms of the, the school piece, really the, the school age children coming here from California or else, wherever else they're coming. Are you seeing any, any trends of, of families moving to nearby counties, maybe Story County, areas that are more affordable because of the cost of living?
It's, it's anecdotal, but at least on my visit with Trainer, which is just down the road, they commented on, you know, the apartments, the rental properties in their zone, that the rents shooting up and families leaving and us getting requests for transcripts from Lyon, Story, maybe, mostly Lyon County, of those families who had to move away from that area within Trainer's Zone, you know, in this neighborhood, out to Fernley or Fallon's, you know, it could be other parts too. But they commented on how they're getting those kind of transcript requests for families and how young professionals have supplanted, replaced those young families in those rental properties in their area. Whether those are younger people working at Tesla or Panasonic or just young professionals from California, I don't know, but they don't have kids generally. So yes, we are hearing those stories and have seen that.
Yeah, it's just really a disturbing trend for us, I think. Thank you. Okay, I just have one quick, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Jeff.
Professor Church, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks.
There's a reason I'm asking, but in the rurals, do they ever, Austin, Eureka, Lander County versus Eureka County, do they, because of the proximity of schools and the branches and everything, do they ever cross workout deals where there are one district that goes to a different county?
They do, and, and as we as well. So we will sometimes have students come in from Lyon County, and it could be because I'm actually working in Washoe County. So I'm going to be taking my child to Washoe County, and we have reciprocal agreements, whether that's with Douglas, Carson City, or Lyon County, but yes.
And then they, we get.
Good question. Before we go on to the next slide, and just so we kind of have this on the, on the record, more or less. So with the number of vacancies, our bus drivers, custodians, I mean, I always consider teachers are the troops on the line, and this is our strong, our backbone staff here. With the salary savings and things of that nature, and I think more or less a straightforward to the point question, what are we doing to address the bus driver shortage?
It's a long answer. We are continuing to strategize about ways to fill those positions. As you, as you know, we've offered incentives, signing and retention and referral bonuses. We did provide for a significant COLA and a, and a one-grade increase to those employees' salaries. And, and we may have to consider more. And I, and I think, you know, we have weekly discussions with operations and the leadership team on that issue. So I, I think Pete probably is going to come to you with kind of updates going forward, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but it's, it's such a difficult, it's such a challenging situation when our hourly rates that we pay are so far below the market and where the market has gone just in the last year or two. And so the question is, what will it take to get to a more market competitive rate, which is maybe what you're asking? And we are exploring alternatives to try to do our employees right. It's just very difficult, again, when per pupil funding is only going at 1.3%. I mean, we can only spend what we get. We are dealt a certain deck of cards, and unfortunately, we can't print money. But it's something I think we need to kind of articulate to the legislature for next year during their session, that we've fallen behind in terms of what we're paying our employees versus other industries. And that's a serious issue. So if the state really wants to fund at a satisfactory level, not even an optimal level, there's increased costs that go along with the wage increases we need, we've seen and need to, you know, try to keep up with.
And I understand, and then I, I know we've had these discussions on one-on-ones and things of that, of that nature. So I just kind of just want to put it out there for the public. So I do appreciate that. I understand that a lot of our hands are tied by our pupil funding by the state. Thank you.
I'm just going to add to that, and you're right, we, we know we've all had patience. So, but it is important that people know that we're having these conversations. A piece of it is certainly the transportation issue was huge before us as we go into the first week of having zones and have some children probably at home and not make, able to make it to school today that none of us feel great about at all. I can't even believe we're having that conversation, right? But part of the conversation along with that is the nutrition services workers and the teacher assistants and, you know, the, the custodians who were falling behind, we have fallen behind, we are behind in those areas as well. In addition, we all know, we know, we know we need to pay our teachers more. I mean, so it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a big conversation that really, you know, we, we need help addressing, it needs to be addressed. We need help addressing across the board. We really do. And we've made some good strides this past year or so with employees and with some, some of the COVID bonuses and those kinds of things because they've done such an amazing job. But gosh, it's just, you know, 1% of the time, it's just not going to get there. You know, exactly. And the rate of inflation, which just, you know, makes things even worse. But I just, I'm going to add on to what you're saying. It's just, this, this is a huge issue that's not short, it's not going to go away tomorrow, and it's not a quick fix to it. It's not something we can fix ourselves.
That, that's right. We are funded, as Jeff showed, 98, 99% by the state. And, you know, this is a national issue, right? Bus driver shortages is happening all across the nation. I'm having a phone call with City or Philadelphia schools later this week to talk about some of the solutions they've pursued. But it is a nationwide issue, but I do think it's exacerbated in Washoe with our housing costs, right? That has really made it such a more critical issue here because people, lower wage families cannot afford to live here. Not when the average housing price is more than $600,000. So.
I was going to ask the same question. Trustee Rodriguez, I was going to wait till the end, but thank you for bringing up, I'll just pile on. I mean, I, I don't know if we can wait till the legislature convenes next year. I mean, that's, that's a whole another year, a whole other cycle. So it's problematic. Bus driver wages, teacher aides, assistants, you know, those things are on my mind. They truly are. Thank you.
You want to jump in, Jeff?
Yeah, you saw me coming there. Just opining that in order to do that, one way we could help that, I think the community has to look at light rail eventually, where people can, say, live elsewhere by light rail and then bring their kids to school here, increasing that, that enrollment. That's just an opining. And then also just, I want to, how do I phrase this? I want to make clear, I'm not endorsing this in any way, but as a statement of fact, it appears we will have two ballot measures for increased taxes, and it would be well premature to anticipate those. But am I correct, there's, there are potentially going to be two ballot measures to increase taxes for education?
The status of that is it is in court. So there's a question as to whether the, the entity that got the signatures for those two measures can pull it off the ballot. The Secretary of State has said they cannot. And so her view is those need to be on the November ballot, but that has been contested in court. And as of this date, I haven't heard a resolution of that court case.
I haven't either.
I just wanted to put it on the record. I'm absolutely not endorsing that. I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, we will move on to the general fund expenditure adjustments. So this, this first row here is where we adjusted our FY22 budget during, in December for the December amended budget. So this first section here is our known salary and benefit changes. So this first row, our employee step increases, those are negotiated. Every year, employees move up a step on their pay scale, and that's just under $8 million. The next item is the collective bargaining, bargaining agreements that we have agreed to with our bargaining units at $4.78 million. The next item here is a, it's a savings for, a temporary savings for a couple of years. So what happened is we created these new ESAR-funded positions, and the employees that moved into those positions from the general fund had, were more experienced, so they had higher salaries and are being replaced with employees or positions that will have a lower cost associated with them. And that was just under $1 million. In addition to that, we had the $6.1 million in turnover savings that we discussed earlier. And so that brings our total salary and benefit changes to $5.7 million. We then have rezoning impacts for the, the new high school, and also having the additions of Swope and O'Brien come online in FY23. So that was about a quarter million dollars related to that. We have known contract and inflationary changes. So we have stormwater utility fees. We started budgeting for that last year. So this is just catching up to have a full year's portion. And then in December, we had also presented to you all a transfer from our contingency account to our transportation fuel budget for inflationary pressures. So this amount here of $600,000 is just adjusting for that for an entire year in next year's budget. The mid-year approvals, in December, we also presented the professional intern program, which you approved. So this is the full year cost of that being built into the budget and the cost of our outside board legal counsel. And the last section here are transfers. So this first item, some of you may recall last year when we went through the budget process, our property and liability insurance premiums had been increasing at about 15 to 16% per year. With the addition of our school expansions and the new high school, along with those increases we've been seeing historically, we assumed a 20% rate increase for next year. So that was about $850,000 that will be an increase to the general fund. And then this last item, the transfers to other funds, we have transfers to our special education fund, our EL and GT weighted funding.
Can I interrupt really quick? Because it's, the insurance base protecting the capital investment, we can't take that out of capital projects?
That's correct. It's an operating cost. Yep.
I think my question's going to be quick. The citations from our school police, do we see any of that funding?
I can't remember. I know that's come up before, and I can't remember if, if we're supposed to. It's, if we do, it's a small amount, but I, I can look, we can look that up.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I mean, as a matter of fact, it is a form of revenue to some degree. And I know that when I was on patrol in HP, we'd get like a $15 or $25 fee. So I'd be interested to see if we can see any of that. Yeah, thank you. I had a laugh. No, no, no. Yeah, new schools, rezoning impacts and staffing at HUG, Swope, O'Brien. Can you help me understand that, that expense?
Yes. So there's a couple of things going on here. So there's three custodian positions, one at each school, that are currently funded out of capital while the school is being built. Those will switch over to the general fund in FY23. So that's probably like $180,000 of that expense, roughly, salary and benefits. And then when we look at the rezoning impact, I think the net impact was probably like an additional assistant principal, is my recollection, of just under $100,000. And that's what makes up.
Are we having challenges finding staff for some of these new schools?
No, we haven't. A lot, so the staff over at HUG, Old HUG, is going to be picked up, almost literally, and over at the, at the new HUG. Yeah. And the same, and O'Brien is the same staff, just moving in the back. And then Swope is the same staff.
You're welcome. Okay, so this last row here, transfers to other funds. We have general fund transfers to our special education fund and our gifted and talented and English learner weighted funding funds. So this is just the, the net impact of any additional revenues we've seen in those funds for next year, turnover savings, step increases, any of that. And that was a reduction of $1.3 million. So that brings our total expenditures and transfers from the general fund to $531.94 million?
Question? Before you aggregate the different classes of employees, what, what number are you looking at? 7,000, 8,000? I know that.
How many employees?
Yeah, just kind of that general total when you're thinking about it.
So I have slide 33. In the general fund, we have 4,747 FTE. So those aren't individual employees. Like if there's two halftime employees, they would count for one there. I don't have a total employees in the general fund off the top of my head.
It's a curiosity question. I'm, I'm hoping that we're growing it.
Yeah, for all funds, I think we're close to 8,000, but we can get that number for you. Okay.
Okay, so this next slide is just a pie chart of those changes from the previous slide. Again, most of our costs are salary and benefits. So most of the changes here were salary and benefits. So moving on to the next slide, one more slide. I think this is the moment we've all been waiting for. And after looking at our ongoing revenues and expenditures, we have a surplus of just over $451,000. It's not much, but it's not a deficit.
It's not a deficit. So that's a win.
I, I think this speaks to the district's hard work, staff, superintendent and board of, of making tough decisions and reductions to get to a structurally balanced budget. And then, you know, as we pointed out earlier, thankfully, we had more than I expected turnover savings to help get to the surplus situation.
I think it's just really important to note that for the, what's this, fourth year in a row? We are, we are, we, we will be, we will have a structurally balanced budget. And that, that did take a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of really tough decisions, a lot of picking up extra stuff in, in the buildings and so on. So.
So, so we have a few, we do have more slides here, obviously.
Yeah, we can't, all right, all right, yes, woo! We can't, okay, sorry.
I mean, I would, I would echo, this is a, a lot better number than any number with a negative in front of it, which is usually what the Board of Trustees for Washoe County School District has been confronted over the past decade, almost every year. So, but that surplus is 0.1% of the general fund budget, right?
So easy, no case.
So it's so easy, yeah, exactly. And, and what you will get at the next meeting are requests from departments for really supercritical items that will have to be funded out of that $451,000. But it is, it is a positive number. And again, as Jeff has said, it wouldn't be positive if not for some fairly anomalous kind of things going on. So I'm not going to say we lucked out because it's not luck, but, you know, if not for turnover. you know, if not for turnover vacancy savings, this would be a significantly negative number. So but it is positive, so that's that's great news.
Mark, does this include the ending fund balance requirement?
Can you elaborate?
Your mic's off, sir. Alan, your mic's off.
Thank you. The the, I think it's a twelve percent ending fund balance.
So we would be able to maintain the twelve percent ending fund balance and have all of four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars to, yes, available. Well, I say that, and then we're going to get to the next few slides.
Not really available, but.
Right, so so we, so let's get to the next few slides, and then we can talk about that.
All right, so moving on to the one-time general fund uses and total expenditures section. So one, one item that was negotiated was a COVID differential for our Washoe Education Association. And that total cost will be a payment FY twenty-three or at the end of FY twenty-three of six point three million dollars. That's a one-time cost, so we're going to use one-time funds to pay for that. So textbook purchases in FY twenty-three will be made out of our stimulus funds or SIR funds. So we have three point one million dollars in budgeted in the general fund for textbooks. That'll be a one-time savings to help pay for this COVID differential.
And I think that's prudent. I I do want to, I guess, clarify, have you clarify that the reason we're reticent about using that for raises, which we all just kind of agreed, yeah, that's a great idea, is because it's not sustainable in our budget. This is kind of money that we have now, we may never have again.
That's correct. There'll be, yeah, one one-time savings. You're welcome. And then for the remaining three point one million dollars, we would utilize the general fund fund balance to pay for the remainder of that COVID differential.
So to answer your question, Trustee Mayberry, we are proposing to draw down general fund fund balance by three million dollars to help cover that COVID differential in fiscal year twenty-three for teachers. I still think will be around twelve percent ending fund balance, so I'm not concerned about that. But but we are going, you know, the plan is to draw that down. That doesn't mean we're not structurally balanced, right? These are one, it's a one-time cost. So again, structurally balanced means that ongoing revenues equal ongoing costs, and that will be the case. But since these are one-time costs, part of how we could afford that differential was to look to our fund balance to cover part of it, and that's the plan.
Okay, this next section is just a summary of our general fund expenditures. So this slide has those ongoing expenditures that we discussed earlier, and then these one-time expenditures for one-time savings, and then the one-time COVID differential. That brings our total expenditures to just over five hundred, five hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And then the next couple of slides are slides that we've presented in the past, just breaking up into different functions or types of expenditures, how we spend our budget. And then, yeah, the next slide, you can see most of our expenses go to salary and benefits. And then on this next slide here, this is that general fund FTE data we we talked about a few minutes ago. FTE is full-time equivalency. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have you go backward just because I think this is, this is a, and I, you know, all my writing, page thirty, slide thirty, with the regular instruction and all the little pieces of pie. I spent a lot of time on this slide because if you look at regular instruction, let's just say it's fifty percent of the budget, and you go, oh, my God, is that all we're spending on teaching? And and so, to be clear, you have to deep dive into these pieces of pie to be able to take them apart to understand that they there are other components, almost all of them, that are related to instruction.
Correct.
And so I guess my question is, of those pieces of pie, my best guess is transfers and contingency really aren't part of instruction. Or is it?
So most of that number is part of instruction. If you don't mind, if we can jump to the next slide.
Please.
So that previous pie chart is how we have to budget on what's called a program and functional basis. So where you see regular instruction, regular is the program, instruction is the function, and we have to budget like that. So that's something we've historically presented. This slide here tries to summarize what where the expenditures go a little bit differently. So this, on the first bullet, that third dash there, the fifty-six point four million dollars, that transfer goes to our special education, gifted and talented, and English learner funds for either direct instruction type positions or student support. So that total number that's going to students in the form of student support, instructional staff support or instruction is that top number on this slide of seventy point four one percent.
I'm going to jump in. I'm glad you went back to this slide. Because when I was looking at the slide, what really jumped out to me, similar to to a trustee Nicolet, is even in the other areas, we're looking at things that are one hundred percent for students or primarily for students, like transportation, that's for students. School administration, that's for students. Someone's got to run the school, someone's got to answer the phone, someone's got to, you know, support the teachers and 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 all of that. And I I actually appreciate that you, how you separate out the central administration and support like printing and HR and risk management and and those things, it's also, we can't do run schools without that, right? And I mean, so I think it's important for us as trustees to really understand this piece and be able to talk about, hey, I mean, like some of the question that that trustee Church had a had a citizen ask, which we get, we all get asked that question a lot. How about administration? I mean, which, and it's okay to get asked that question a lot, quite frankly. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not mad at that, so to speak. But that's why it's good for us to have this kind of information, and we can say, hey, here's, and we just looked at this stuff, and this is really what it comes down to when you really pull it out. I mean, that's a really small amount for, you know, administration, for the senior, senior level administration, the board, and so on. Most of those, even even these ancillary, even the support functions are school-related, as it should be. As it should be, it's just, I'm glad, I'm glad we went back to this slide, because I think it's important to note that, because we all ask, get asked this question all the time.
And if you don't mind, I'll take us to your next slide, which I think is really insightful. And and as it should be, our largest costs are are for people because it's people that do the work. And I think when you look at ninety, I'm going to round it up to ninety-two percent, that's like, wow, that only leaves, even I can do that math, eight percent to spend on all the other stuff. I think that's staggering.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot towards salary and benefits. And then this slide here also shows, you know, there's utilities. So that shows up in the operations and maintenance section from the prior slide, where that's all of our building utilities. That's a significant amount of money as well. Okay. So, yeah, this slide here, so this is just the highlights of the general fund preliminary budget. Again, we have a surplus of just over four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. This is due to higher than normal turnover savings, and we also have a significant amount of indirect cost revenue because of these federal stimulus funds that we've been receiving. Our teams will continue to work through revenue and expenditure estimates for the rest of the budget process. And then at the next budget workshop in March, we'll be presenting recommendations for any critical items. I'm going to hand it off to Mark on the next slide to talk about some near-term headwinds we'll be facing in the future.
So Jeff gets to present the good numbers, and I get to present the bad stuff. Just just as, so cautionary kind of comment, again, just to reinforce some of the other things we talked about earlier in the presentation. Again, due to those enrollment bubbles in the current high school grades, we think it's likely we will see enrollment decline. We're seeing charter schools, more and more charter schools, look at Northern Nevada to come to. Last one is the our favorite cost of wages in Nevada, cost of employment index number, where we continue to work hard at the Commission on School Funding to address possible changes. But it it could go the other way, too. It could actually, it could get better, it could get worse. So we'll just have to see where it all ends up. And then on expenditure pressures, you all know about inflation. I think year-over-year inflation last month was, the post was seven and a half percent. So we're, we are seeing that on a real-world level now, not just fuel costs, but when we're buying goods, our purchasing department is seeing the selected winning bidders saying, we can't deliver those goods to you at the cost we quoted. We're seeing that just more and more and more. So we're seeing it, and it's going to impact us. And then going forward, you know, you, this board will be working on a new strategic plan, and and we'll need to cost that out. And what does it take to achieve the objectives you you want to pursue during that process? And then, of course, we know the stimulus funds will end, and that will bring a number of employees back and have a number of kind of issues related to that that we'll need to prepare for. So there are a lot of issues, not just state funding going forward, that we'll need to grapple with in order to maintain a balanced budget going forward. But again, that's our goal, is always to have a balanced budget and be financially sustainable and stable.
This is kind of a tough question to ask, but I I think it's a reality, given that several times you've referenced charter schools. And and just just to be clear, I I am very much for parents doing what is best for their family across the board. It's their right and their responsibility, and I always hope that that they, like my husband and I did, make the best choice for their family. Having said that, how can we look at, I don't want to call it a benefit, but the positive in revenue savings impact of having less children in our schools, which, let me just say, I don't want to happen. Again, it's a right and a responsibility of families. How how do we, how do we look at that to to make us maybe feel a little safer in that loss of per pupil?
Yeah, it's a really good question. Trying to spin it as positively as we can. If we're having trouble filling vacancies, I suppose, you know, fewer children to teach will help offset that phenomenon, right? That that maybe, I'm not being facetious, I'm just trying to, right? That that could help on the margins. I think when when we look at those potential enrollment declines, I know our capital project staff has begun looking at some opportunities for cost savings on a kind of facilities level. And and some of that's actually really exciting and really represents an opportunity. So I don't want to steal their thunder. I think they'll be talking about it in April, want to bring our capital improvement plan to you. But there are, it's an opportunity to to be more efficient in 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 many ways. And so that's what we'll, you know, that's where we'll need to go. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to this slide here about the March work session. So again, we'll we'll refine any numbers, come back with projected revenues and expenditures for a tentative budget deficit or surplus. And then we'll review any department requests that are aligned with the strategic plan, look at any opportunities for savings that we found, and that'll get us to our tentative budget. So anything that's approved by the board that day, any changes will incorporate into our budget document that we've submit to the Department of Taxation on or before April fifteenth. So I'm going to hand it back to Mark to discuss public engagement.
Thanks. And just, you know, to talk about the tentative budget, it is tentative. It's not like we, you cannot continue to make decisions for the fiscal year twenty-three budget afterwards. You can. We just need to finalize and submit a budget as someone asks by June eighth. So even between the tentative and final budget process, we can do analysis, we can bring things to you, you can provide input. That still goes on until basically the end of May. So we've talked before about public engagement. It's something the school district has done every single budget process for a number of years now. There's, again, various ways we can do that. In the past, we have done surveys. Some of those were geared to when we had to make cost reductions, and we were asking the public about their feelings about those reductions, which was brutal. And thankfully, we don't have to do that again this year. So kind of in touching base with other leadership, there there are a couple of surveys going on, but they will, I don't think it's survey-heavy, so I don't think staff feels like the public would necessarily suffer from survey fatigue, is a word you hear a lot. But we always want to be careful about that. We're going through superintendent search process where we have focus groups and so forth. And there is a climate survey that will be coming up, our annual climate survey. So I guess the question, you know, really is to get your input on what you'd like to see in terms of public engagement. It it's challenging, right? With just a little bit of money to play with, it's kind of challenging to ask the public, what do you want to do with that money when it's so small? Nothing they would, I think, respond to is a very small number. So we don't want to get in a situation where we're asking the public, hey, what do you want to do? You know, how do you want to spend money when there is no money to spend? So I just, I want to throw that out to you. Never want to, we never want to do that to the public, right? Again, I thought our past virtual forums that we started doing back in twenty twenty have been really good. They're a way to educate the public and talk about some of the issues you've been raising, the the minimal funding increases we've received from the state, how we kind of put the budget together, you know, the the trade-offs and cost-benefit kind of calculations we always have to make. So I think for sure staff would want us to do another virtual forum, because it's really good education for those who want it, and we've gotten good participation by doing it remotely and virtually versus onsite. But in terms of a survey, I guess I I throw it out to you all to get your thoughts on if you if you have interest in that or or want to take a pass this year on that.
Well, let's go to trustee Rodriguez.
Well, overall, I think it's great that we have a little less than half a million play money. But to do a survey, I really feel this, and I feel this as a parent. We're having problems with staff, we're having problems keeping bus drivers. So to sit there and to throw out a survey, hey, what do you want to spend money on? It's almost bus drivers. We can't do that, though. We're kind of a hard, hard place to do that. I I really feel it would kind of spare the public with this. You know, I mean, one, it's half a million in the grand scheme of things. I mean, that's not a whole lot. I mean, there's a couple of new cars.
Did you say one percent? Did you say something like that? It's one percent?
Point one percent.
Oh, not even one percent.
So to do a survey on top of, correct, we're doing superintendent search and all those things of that nature, to sit there and make a key, what do you want to spend money on to our community with, I just don't see a benefit in it. I think it would be best to lead us to the gee whiz's of our school district and, you know, kind of come to us with what they want or what they think would be best. My my personal feelings.
Thanks, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Mayberry?
Well, you know, what I heard today is is discouraging, is is, I think the fundamentals are there in our economy to some degree, but it's also getting expensive to live here. And so I I, should we do engagement, I would almost ask to reverse, you know, what, based on the red flags that I'm hearing and into the future, what would you be willing to give up in public education, where those where those services that are less important? Am I suggesting do that? But I think that's more the direction I'd want to hear, because, yeah, you can't do much with less than half a million, totally agree. So I I think we just need to ask the right questions. Thank you.
I I think, I I hear both of those, right? And I think they're both really important conversations to have.
conversations to have. I think it's, I'm in this place where, you know, it's like you, you want to give the public an opportunity, right? So, where do you find that line? And maybe that's the virtual forum, you know, perhaps, because I would hate to just say there's just no engagement at all. I just, and I don't think anybody's saying that, by the way. But I don't, I don't think that's the place for us to land, so to speak. And I think in that, in whatever engagement we have, I think it is important to talk about some of the other, some of the other realities and, and the things that we're facing that we, that we can't control. And I think, I also think it's important to talk about how this is why it's important as we move forward, as we work on our new strategic plan, as we move into the retirement of one superintendent and going into another superintendent, that we have a good, strong direction going forward. I mean, there, there are some things that are really great about our district, and there are some things that we want to improve about our district. And, you know, that, that's a part of the conversation as well, not, not that we spend a bunch of budget time on that, but I think acknowledging, hey, there's some opportunities we have, and this is, we want you to be involved as we, as we move those opportunities forward, to build upon the successes that we've had. Because we, you know, talk, we can talk about what's wrong, and let's talk about what's strong. And that, and that impacts that. I would, I think it's, it's, I don't want to send a message that, wow, we have, that we can, we can spend some money that we don't have. I think that's frustrating to people. I think, let's be honest, right? Let's be honest and say, "This is where we are. Here are some things that are, that have contributed to where we are. Some things absolutely out of our control, some things, hey, you know what? We know there's some areas we got to be better, too. There are some areas that we, that we've done great at, that we want to maximize on, and that can help whatever, right?" So, I think we'd be, we should be real honest about it. But I don't think we should ask the public a question if there's, if we can't, and then we get an answer. And then there's an expectation that we're going to do something with that, which, as there should be. And then, oh, well, hey, we don't have, I mean, we kind of ran into that with the, with the, what was it, the walk zones? It was, hey, we asked them questions, because when we asked a question, when we, when we, when we said this is when we're going to ask the question, we weren't in the position that we were in. And then we get some answers, and it's frustrating to the public, because you gave us five, five options, but we can't do four of them.
Four options.
Bell schedules, I mean, yeah, bell schedules, yeah. Yeah, you know, and we can't, and that was frustrating, which is why I think we wisely made the decision, hey, let's put this off, because we asked them a question that we can't even do anything with. That was frustrating. And I don't want to go back down that road if we don't have to, but let's be honest, right? And talk about, and tell them the whole picture. So, that's my take on that. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. My, yeah, I don't, wouldn't want to spend a lot of money on a survey. I think most people recognize they don't have the expertise to delve into it, but there might be that group of people out there who do and can find some gold nugget of ideas. So, is it possible, just an idea, that you put it out, link online, and say, "Just email your ideas to budget@wachoschools.net." I hate these surveys where you got to fill out 1 to 10, and this and that, and then you got to go on and on and on. And that's just an idea that would give them, hey, if you got an idea, you know, send it in. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Rodriguez?
All right. I just want to reiterate, I think with point, point 00.
Point 1.
I mean, I really think, especially given our current statement, I just, I want to stress that, like, as a parent, knowing or have an idea of the pulse of my community, it's half a million, I just see a lot of backlash, a lot of them saying that, why isn't this going to bus drivers? And, and kind of piggybacking on trustee Church, you don't have the expertise. Okay, you got this widget, this silvered pie, so many doesn't cross over. So, I think just doing a survey on something that's a point 1% of a little bit of money is putting that to the community, I think it's just going to be a lot more frustrating for the community at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Dr. Nicolet, and then clerk Manetto?
It's always important to obtain information from our public. I know we all agree on that. I, I think at this point, with half a million dollars, which is a nice little tidy sum, I'd like to know what our teachers would, can use. And I know that they could easily spend it. And it's not that I don't trust the public, but our teachers, our custodians, our bus drivers, our nutrition workers, our classifieds, they're, they're the boots on the ground. And I think they know on a daily basis what would help them the most. And so, if, if we end up with a survey, I would prefer that we capture ideas from our employees, and then maybe throw out ideas to the public and just see, you know, do they like A, B, or C? Because I, I'd like to hear from our employees first.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Clerk Manetto?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a hard one. I'm not necessarily in favor of a survey at this time, comparatively speaking. But I think it might be really important to do forums so that we have, we're educating people, so they see, oh, and then, you know, they might have some ideas and some, although, if we're going to do surveys, I would agree that it's our staff, because I think it gives us almost false hope, I would agree with. Thank you.
Sorry?
No, please, go ahead.
So, I do want to make a couple things, well, one thing clear. We have $450,000, but you haven't heard yet staff's requests, right? And so, as an example, I know we have one request to address the issues we're having filling teacher aides and assistants. So, you're going to hear an idea that will attempt to address it, but it costs money. So, I mean, you're going to hear those kinds of things in March. So, yeah, right now, the preliminary budget surplus is $450,000, but you haven't heard yet from staff on what they want to do. And of course, needs always outstrip resources, right?
Of course.
But when, when you're talking $450,000, that's pretty much a sure thing. But I hear what you're saying, I guess I might throw out multiple virtual forums, and one for staff, and one for the public, or so forth, you know, so that, again, I think a couple people have said it. If you're uneducated about kind of the realities of the budget, it's hard to provide meaningful, helpful input, which is why we have the virtual forums, to kind of try to demystify the budget and share where we're at, and the trends we're seeing, and why we're at where we're at. And that is helpful, then, for people to hear that first, and then they can provide input. So, that might be a suggestion I might have, is multiple virtual forums with different audiences.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mather. Superintendent?
Well, thank you very much, Madam President. And I'll just throw out there, too, you all are starting your strategic plan, you know, and you're going to have a lot of surveys into what trustee Mayberry was speaking of. That would be a great opportunity, I would think, with your new superintendent, because remember, your strategic plan speaks to your, your moral document, your budget. And so, in having those surveys integrated into what you're going to be seeing as your new goals, your new objectives, your new initiatives, when you put that strategic plan, that's going to speak to what it is that you want, what is it that you may not want any longer within this.
And that's, and that's an important process in and of itself. So, really, and that will certainly, during the strategic planning process, as, as we should, in the robust fashion, it, it allows the community to be involved, and it's your staff, community, students, to really be involved and share. And that's plotting the direction forward. I like what you said about, it's what, certainly, this is not just what we want to do, because that means, that's going to mean, there's going to be some stuff we don't want to do anymore, right? Because especially if we're talking about, you know, 0.1%, then that means something's got to give. And that's, and that's okay. That's a great conversation to have. So, really, I know what you need from, from this point, as we move forward, Mr. Mather, I guess we can go to the next slide, because what, here's our timeline, which we were just talking about, is we, we're, at this point, the whole idea behind the presentation, oh, is to get a motion, thank you very much, on how we want to move forward. But I see public comments, so why don't we do that first?
Shannon Coley, the board received an email from Diana Marr.
Come on, Ms. Coley, thank you.
Okay. I understand that there is no long-term answer for this bus driver crisis. But I do know that since 2020, we have known that S R money could go to transportation. And why wasn't any of this money used to mitigate at least till the end of this year, this crisis? We could have used that S R money. I just don't know why it wasn't thrown at it.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, so as we bring it back here, there, it looks like we need, looking for a motion to, to approve, right? Yeah, 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 to approve the budget, and then, and with, and with the preliminary budget, is that right? To approve the preliminary budget? I'm, I'm going to make sure we get you what you need. Well, let me read my paper here. Yes, provide direction to the superintendent, yes. Yes, to analyze and report. So, actually, it isn't really to approve the preliminary budget, it's to, it's for whatever direction going forward for the superintendent, which, which could include a couple of virtual forums, or something along, if, if the boards, you know, will like to entertain the survey as we've chatted about, it was clearly anything like that, right?
Correct, yeah. You can do the motion as you just said, or there could be added direction.
Okay. Thank you. So, trustee Rodriguez?
I was going to say this one last time. I just can't stress enough, I do value public comment a lot, or public input. And I think if we had $13 million in surplus, I'd be absolutely to see what the people want.
Yeah, yeah.
I just can't get behind another survey or another forum going out to the public, especially with everything that's going on right now. So, just want to say that one last time.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Church?
And I agree with that. I'd, I'd like to see some form of public comment, short of a tedious, expensive survey.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Church. I mean, we're, we're sounding like we're getting close to around some consensus in this, is some opportunity for the public to be involved without it being a survey, the importance of informing the public of where we are, and some of the challenges that we have. And I think a part of that conversation could also be in my mind, as well as we look forward to, is sharing that. We know we have a full-blown strategic planning process coming, when it'd be an opportunity for much more robust, you know, give and take from the, from the public, from staff, from students, and all of that. And as we, this process works together, that can be a part of that presentation. So, just looking for, trustee Church?
I'm prepared to make motion.
All right, sir.
Okay, make sure I'm not recommending PLCs.
No, we haven't had that presentation yet. Yeah, that's the wrong page. Turn your page.
I motion that the Board of Trustees provide direction to the superintendent to analyze and report back to the board specific budget issues, items, and other changes to the district's fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget process, including a method to reach out to the community for input, short of a formal survey.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Church. Has that enough direction? Do you want more specifics on this? You're, we're okay with that? Okay. So, look, is there, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second from trustee Rodriguez, and the motion is that the, is that we provide the direction, direction that we're providing, right? If I may, I don't want to, I don't want to change your motion, trustee Church, so at least listen to what I'm saying. The motion that we're, the direction that we're providing is to report back to the board on specific budget issues, items, and other changes, which we're, which, which we've been, we've already been told is going to be what staff has recommended, right? We've shared that. And, and the next steps in the, in the 22, 23 budget process, which, I mean, I would be, I'd like to be a little more specific, just because if we want virtual forums, let's say we want virtual forums. I mean, that's, because this didn't really tell her what to do. It just says, let's give her, let's give her a direction to do.
Go wild.
Not, that's what I'm afraid of. No, no, just, I mean, if, if, but again, it's, we have a motion in a second, so it's really the pleasure of the board that, I think, just, just to, if we want to make sure we land where we want to land. Although, she's heard what we said, it's really, we have a motion in a second, so we can go forward. I just wanted to get a little of my comments out. Let's hear more, trustee Nick, I mean, trustee Manetto, and then we go back to trustee Church.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering if we want a friendly that says, "Virtual forums," or some, I just kind of like virtual forums. I mean, do we want to be specific? That's, I guess that's just, like you were saying. Thank you.
It's up to the second, the motion in a second, there.
I'm not opposed to a friendly at all. I just, I just trust our superintendent to evaluate what's cost-effective. We also have some town halls coming up, but I just trust our superintendent to, to make the tough decisions on how to do that effectively.
Okay. If we're comfortable, then we can go forward. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. At the record show with a zigzag zip, and during that conversation, I want to just also note that, that trustee Smith joined us. So, good to, good to have you back with us. All right, is there anything else you need from us, gentlemen, on the budget? All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. We're going to our closing public comment. Any closing public comment, JJ?
We still have another agenda item.
Oh, that's right. We just, we just.
We're going to take a recess for lunch.
All right, thank, all right. I was like, hey, is there anything, any more comments? I know PLCs, I see you. I see you. I know, I see you. I see all of you. I see you. All right, so why don't we do, we're going to take a recess for lunch. Let's make that 20 minutes, okay? Come back, and lunch is later.
Why don't we just go ahead?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we just?
Because lunch is in the room, and it's going to go till 2 o'clock.
Okay.
So, so that's what we're not going to do. I appreciate it. You guys, you guys make good thing I'm here, because your vice president will push you through this thing. We need to have lunch. All right, so let's, so let's, okay, let's make, how about we make it 15 minutes? And is that better for you, Dr. Nicolet?
I'm sorry, I never said 15 minutes.
First you didn't want any, now you want 20. 20-minute recess for lunch, and we'll be back in. And use of professional learning communities or PLCs in the Wachowski County School District to improve student outcomes. This is, this is really important. This is an important piece of the work to, how do we do better? How do we help our students do better? How do we improve our student outcomes? And dare I say, just favorite phrase, quality of education. Quality of education. No, that's important. It's important. So, before us, we have a fine cadre of individuals. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Parks. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, President Taylor. Yes, this fine cadre is for people who are highly passionate about PLCs. So, we will get right into our presentation. So, for the record, Troy Parks, chief academic officer. And we have with us today, Dr. Sandra Eard. She is our director of assessment. I can tell you, in her position in assessment, she is always aware and focused on how are we going to use this data to help us improve student learning outcomes. We have Kevin Carroll. He is our principal at Sparks High School. Kevin's going to be able to.
He's just the average principal we have, right?
Well, you know, he got his name drawn out of a hat. That's how we got him here.
So, that's how he became principal of the year. That's how he became. Okay. Okay. Oh, right, JJ's cup, that she pulls names out, I think. I was wondering, I was like, how'd he get here? But, okay, thank you so much.
So, I don't want to steal his thunder, but to say the least, he has done a tremendous job at leading our Sparks High railroaders. And he's going to share with you some of the data that he has about why he's so passionate, is this works for our students. And then, of course, we have a current learning facilitator, Janice Pearson's here, and she is at Bud Beasley. And she actually brought with her real comments from students at her school who, who are benefactors of what we're trying to accomplish here. So, here's our agenda for the day. We really want to talk about and share with you and have you interact with, whoops, what are the big ideas of PLCs? We have an activity for you, and we're going to ask you to engage and talk with each other, much like we would in schools.
Can we do that?
The, the PLC process is based on three big ideas, which we're going to share with you, give you an overview, and four critical questions. And I'm going to get into that in a little bit more. And yes, as much as Dr. Eard and I talked about spending 90 minutes of lecturing you about why we need to have a really serious focus on PLCs in the future of our district, we did reconsider that, and we brought in Kevin and Janice to help us out with this presentation.
Good decision.
You're selling me short there, Dr. Taylor. All right, so, and then we have an activity at the and then we have an activity at the end, which is very important around loose tight and loose tight in an organization. It is simply-- there are things in our organization we should be flexible with, and we should negotiate. And then there are things that we should say, no, our district is about student learning, and therefore, there are some non-negotiable things. And we accomplished that last year as our own WCSD loose tight document. And we're very proud and felt like that was a huge pivot point for us for the future. And Dr. Eard's going to share some process about how we went about that. So-- and then, if at all possible, we did really try to make this engaging, fun, interesting for a good 90 minutes. If you can, we ask-- we did build in a question and answer period. So if possible, we want to be able to answer questions from all levels of our district about the questions you might have around PLCs. So if possible, we'll wait till the end.
I was just going to ask you, would you prefer to wait? Okay, so let's just jot them down if they comes up. I haven't gotten to the second page yet.
See, we're teachers at heart, so we always overplan.
See, she's a teacher too. Okay, I get it. All right, all right.
All right, so getting us started. What I want you to know, if you weren't aware, is that PLCs is actually borrowed from business and industry. And to put it in very simple terms, because it's very easy with jargon to get confused about what are we really talking about here? One of the foundational pieces of PLCs is system thinking. So in every one of your day jobs, systems thinking is prevalent, whether you're a business owner, whether you come from military, fire department, music, early childhood, everything, whether we line it out or don't recognize it, it is a system. So that is the part that we have in education really focused on, is making learning a very deliberate systematic approach. Admittedly, as a teacher, there were times where my system was plan, do, plan, do, plan, do. And one of the key things that PLCs reminds us is planning is good, doing is good. But then, you've got to study your results, and you have to ask yourself as an educator, are my students learning? And if they're not, that is the key point which we intervene, and we either say we're going to readdress, reteach, or we're going to extend the learning. So a little bit more of the history. In the district, we did many, many years ago, probably when Dr. McNeil was a principal, started on PLCs. And many of us got to go to conferences. And we can tell you, the first time we had heard this idea of PLCs, and I know Sandy and Kevin would agree, it clicked for us. It's like, no, that is how we have to focus. And that is who, when we were principals, said we have to focus on our organizations becoming learning organizations, because that's how we're going to get better results. That's how we're going to close student achievement gaps. That's how we're going to have students learning at all high level-- all at high levels. So for a lot of us, our principalship and us as teachers, that was our big focus. One of the concepts that when you do a little bit of research on PLCs is this idea of called PLC Lite. And that is a very dangerous situation. And some of our schools, when we didn't have a focus on PLCs, had a highly collaborative culture, but they weren't necessarily collaborating around the things that were going to improve student learning outcomes. Get together and collaborate around field trips, getting together to collaborate around what we're going to teach next. Those are all well-intended collaborative ideas. But we really have to, in the culture of PLC, be focused on student learning and using that data. As I said before, that part where we're looking at the results and deciding, okay, if we're in the learning business, what do we do now? Now that we know kids did or didn't learn? So about three years ago, right prior to the pandemic, many of our principals and part of our leadership team had conversations, and we decided collectively that we really wanted to get back to focusing on PLCs and the culture of PLC. So we formed the PLC Design Team, which is principals who really have a passion for PLCs as well as district-level leadership. And we collaborate and plan about what we're going to be providing at our next-- we've changed to WCSD Academy. That's our principals' training. And our entire WCSD Academy is now focused around the culture and practices of PLCs. Some of you have had the opportunity to hear Janelle Keating speak. She is a superintendent in the White River School District, also employed by Solution Tree. And she has been our guest, and it really helped us as a focus, from her experience as a superintendent, around how to go about this in a large district. So we are definitely proud of the work that has gotten us to this point. But as you'll know for sure, it's a journey, and it's always going to be a journey. We will never have arrived and say, yeah, we're absolutely a learning organization now, and we can quit focusing on that. So our first activity is next, I think. All right, so this is just real quick. You're going to see this. Here's the part of the systems is that, yes, we're always focused on student learning outcomes. That's our results. And one of the biggest factors in PLCs is focusing on collaboration. So you may have seen this before. And this is a key piece of PLCs, and it breaks down all parts of the organization and the responsibilities that each department has in regards to a learning organization, professional learning communities. So what we wanted to do is-- believe it or not, it includes the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees. So we wanted to make sure that we give you some time to talk and look through this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make sure you have a hard copy if you want, because I made hard copies. But it's going to be a quick little assignment where I'll give you about two minutes of reading and individual think time. Then when I say go, we're going to have you partner up. And the key is, is we want you to be looking and synthesizing across our organization, what do we all have in common? From leadership team, to Board of Trustees, to school sites, to teachers, there are some main focuses that we should all have. And we want you to be able to talk that over with a shoulder partner. So any questions before I pass out your handouts? That is an excellent question, trustee Rodriguez. So this first part is individual reading and think time. You're looking for what we all have in common across our responsibilities. You can highlight, you can annotate. I'm sorry, Dr. Taylor, did you ask a question? Yeah, I just wanted you to be able to read through and kind of start to align, highlight, annotate where we have commonalities in our different working groups. Go about one more minute, and then we'll pair you up. About 10 more seconds. And if you can just find a shoulder partner, it's okay to work in threes as well. All right, we'll give you about 30 seconds more. Wrap it up in the next 30 seconds, please. All right, and I did hear that, President Taylor, that you thanked your shoulder partner. That was very good modeling. Thank you. I only heard her.
No, I just turned my mic on. It's always somebody like this in class, right? It's always somebody like this in class.
All right, so thank you for quickly collaborating around that. In a classroom, we would probably randomly call on you. But that was just a little bit of a sense of collaboration and working together. Does anyone have something that they'd like to share that either they recognized as common tasks or that their partner that they collaborated with had as a common task? Yes, trustee Smith?
I'm that person in class that always raises my hand first.
There's the other person in class. I was going to say that.
So trustee Church and I actually aligned on a lot of these. And one of the ones that we both highlighted across all four groups that we both felt strongly about was celebrating improvement.
Definitely part of this PLC culture. Others?
I would just add this, and I think an important piece that my, you know, kind of mad shoulder partner here, but keep the relation-- I'll keep the door open for continued collaboration. Great place, thank you. No, but to focus on learning. I mean, all the way across the board, starting with the board, right? Just the importance of that.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Two things I'd like to contribute. One, you already know. The other one, you maybe forgot. Monitor, it's, you know, throughout the whole thing. But I found it very interesting that in these four categories, three of them referred to regular meetings, but not in the school board and superintendent. So please add "regular meetings," because we do that. Okay?
Absolutely. Any other things that you recognize that is important for our learning organization? Because we're going to give you all the answers next. All right, so here they are. And again, we were talking earlier, those of us who have been working on PLCs or learning organizations for a lot of our careers, recognize that every year, we learn something that is a next step that will help improve student learning outcomes. But here's some of the foundational pieces. And yes, collaboration, it goes across all working groups. As several of you pointed out, the focus on learning is a constant. It's our mission. It's got to be part of our vision for the future. Analyzing improvement data in student learning. There is an old business saying that you measure what you find most important, or you inspect what you expect. So that student learning data in a school district is monumental.
I'll give you another one. What gets measured gets done.
Yes. Obviously, this is a big one, especially when we're talking about our students that we're always modeling behavior. And yes-- And yes, celebrating improvements and giving the credit to our educators who are on the front lines, who impact our students the most, those are very critical ideas of, of a learning organization. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Eard now, and she's going to take this next session and give us a little bit more on the key tenets of PLCs.
For the record, Sandra Eard, Director of Assessment. And first of all, before I even start with this slide, I want to tell you how privileged we are that we are here to speak to you today and go over the information that we have that we are so passionate about, because this is what we do every day, and it's so exciting to talk about student learning. And that's what we're passionate about, and that's what we do every day. So thank you for giving us this time. As Dr. Parks talked about, the PLC process is the promising way to ensure that our students are learning at high levels, and that's what we want for all of our students. That's what you want for your children, your grandchildren. We want them learning at high levels, meaning they're learning at grade level or beyond. Richard Defour put PLCs in this kind of a box, that it is the ongoing process that educators work on collaboratively and in recurring cycles. So it doesn't happen just once. It's coming back all the time to review student data. What are we teaching them? How do we know they've learned it? What are we going to do if they didn't get it that first time? And it's collective inquiry. So it's not just one teacher making those decisions. It is the team. It's a team effort. And also including our special ed, our EL teachers, our ancillary teachers, music, PE, et cetera, the teachers, those teachers who are working with those students. It's a collective group. And they do this as an action research to achieve better results for students, always. That is what's in the forefront of our mind as we are looking at PLC process. So with the PLC process, there are four basic questions we're answering all the time, again in that recurring cycle. What do we want our students to learn? How do we know they've learned it? What do we do if they don't learn it the first time? And what do we do if they already know it? So we're going to look at, first of all, answering that question. What do we want our students to learn? We have the NVACs, which are the Nevada Academic Standards, and we need to start with those. All of our grades, our courses have standards. We need to look at our standards. But we also need to look at what is most essential for that grade level or for that course? What do we expect all students across the district to know in algebra, in biology, in third grade math? What is so vital that they can't move on to the next grade unless they know these pieces? And so that's where we come up with essential standards, and we've been working on essential standards for two years. So it's a pretty new concept. It's pretty new to our district. But when we're looking at this, we're looking, first of all, at equity. We want to make sure that our students who are taking algebra are learning the high levels of content at student, at school A as well as school B. The standards are there for all of our students, so we want to have that guaranteed viable curriculum for all of our students. And by diving into the standards and looking at, this is so important for third grade to know, to move on, we're going to take extra time and support for any student who doesn't get it the first time, and we're going to provide those interventions, because they have to know it to go on to fourth grade. Essential standards also narrow the focus on what we're going to intervene on. So just like I said before, this is so important. I'm going to teach everything but this one piece, and for third grade, maybe subtracting across zeros, because that's a difficult thing. Subtracting across zeros. They have to know it so they can go on to third grade and go on to those other standards. So it focuses on what are we going to intervene upon? And the less is more theory. The fewer things we have to intervene on that we need to make sure, we can make sure we go deep with it and they actually have the understanding, the conceptual understanding of those pieces. And then, in the absence of those essential standards, and the way I started my career, teachers picked their own essential pieces if, if we're not told, or if we don't decide as a group what's most important. So early in my career, kids would come to me, some of them from a different class, knew this really well, but others knew this really well. Or as in biology, without really looking and pacing out and saying, this is important and this is important. One teacher might spend a lot of time on cell respiration, whereas another teacher spends a lot of time on heredity. But we want to have consistency across the district and that equity for our students across the district, so as they move as well, they have the same background. I think Mr. Dr. Parks is going to talk.
No, I just wanted to, thank you, Dr. Eard, and I wanted to chime in about this idea of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And the concept here is, is that we should be able to say to our parents, for example, in the third grade, not, here's the standards, I hope your child learns them this year. But the concept of a guaranteed and viable curriculum is, here are the essential standards, and these are the standards we are going to work together and make sure your child learns, because they are not only going to be incredibly important in the next grade level, but they're also going to be incredibly important for success when they become adults. And so we should be able to, every year, have those essential standards really be focused on what is so vital in that grade level, that we're not hoping, we're not kind of committed, we're guaranteed and promising that in our process, in our system, we are going to do everything in our power to guarantee you as a parent, your children will learn these
So one of the misconceptions we've seen, because like I said, we've only been at this for about two years, going through this process and making sure we have input from all teachers, is making sure that we don't put ourselves in a pigeonhole that only teaching essential standards. So Doug Reeves, who has done some work with us as a school district as well, gives us a little caution to make sure that our priority, he calls them priority, we call them essential standards, does not relieve a teacher of the responsibility to teach everything. They need to teach all of the standards and all of the indicators. Rather, the essential standards focus on which standards in the course or the grade level are most essential for those students' success, and which ones can be given less emphasis. Never do we say we don't teach everything in our NVACs, our Nevada Academic Standards. So just wanted to make sure that we keep that in mind as we teach everything, but we're going to intervene and give time and support for those students who don't understand those essentials first. Our essential standards, like I said, they're only about two years old. We've been working on this. Last year, in the spring, we met with elementary teachers in math and ELA, secondary focused on math, ELA, social studies, and biology. We had teachers come together, look at all the standards in their courses, and start looking at the alignment with other grades, but also what is it that is so important in our grade levels? So teachers got together, we had probably six meetings for our elementary, for math and ELA, about six also for the four subjects in high school, or secondary, so it was middle school and high school, to come up with our first document of essential standards. We implemented those this fall, and right now, actually, we are in the process with elementary to go back and revise. We always knew that when we started this, that first year is not going to be the hard fast answers. We need to put it in place for a while. We need to review. We need to decide, is this really what's going to get us to the point where all students are learning at high levels? So we're in that revision process now as we go forward to the next year. The next question, once we decide what is it we're going to have our students learn, how are we going to know when they've learned it? So this goes back to what Troy, or Dr. Parks had talked about with the fact that when he and I both started, we did a lot of plan and do. Plan, do, send home, send home homework, send home corrected assignments. But what are we going to do with that? And how do we actually drive our instruction? So with the, how do we know if they've learned it? We have put together district-wide common assessments, and in our schools, the teacher teams also have teacher common assessments that they put together, possibly, maybe it's an exit ticket, those kinds of things, to monitor their, their growth as, as the semester carries on. We have common assessments right now in kindergarten through eighth grade and Algebra I for math and for, and then we have some benchmarks for our K1 coming in next year. Our ELA, we have in second through eighth grade and, and freshman English, so EL1, 2 is freshman English as well. For our elementary, when we started this process, we looked at, and it was a driver, our Smarter Balance scores were not where we wanted them. So what can we do? And we started looking at our Envision textbook, our curriculum materials, and wanted to pace out common assessments from the district with our materials, with our pacing guide, with CNI. So it was very much a collaborative effort, working with CNI, looking at Smarter Balance items as well. So we've put Envision items, which is our textbook, and Smarter Balance clone items into our common assessments to ensure that our students have experience with Smarter Balance items, how they're, how they are stated, and how they ask for item, for responses. We also provide these assessments to the teachers so that they can see them before instruction even starts. So they can look at the assessment that their students will take six weeks later and plan out, what we call backwards planning, plan out exactly what it is they need to know and how many days they think they're going to spend on each topic, to ensure that their students can be successful on that assessment. In our package, we also provide some student self-reflection opportunities, and this helps the students take ownership of their own work. And we have some wonderful examples of student reflections. So, and then we also, this year, we started PLC lead meetings in grades six through nine. So we meet with a representative from all of our sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade ELA and math, and talk about what's coming up as a look ahead. And then after the results come in, talking about, how did our students do, and what does the work reflect about our students and their learning? In the assessment plan, the district common assessments are still a formative piece, so they're up on the top. They're a longer-term piece, about six to nine weeks. But within that, the teachers and the students have many opportunities, like I said before, within the classrooms or within the collaborative groups. The teachers have many checkpoints along the way that they do together. Could be topic assessment tests or, or units, unit tests that are spread out probably four weeks or so. There's also the common assessment that they might choose together, which might be an exit ticket, that they do every three to five days. And then the biggest opportunity for feedback and monitoring of student progress for students and teachers is that daily check for understanding. So we have teachers walking around, checking their work, giving them feedback on a consistent basis, so that they know those kids are ready when those common assessments come around.
Dr. Eard, would you mind giving just a little bit of a definition, the difference between a formative and a summative common assessment?
Absolutely. In fact, I have it in my note, but I skipped it, so I apologize. Okay. So when, when we talk about a formative assessment, and that's what all of these assessments would be for students, a formative assessment is going to guide teacher instruction, guide student work, as far as checking on what is the progress that students made so far. But it's not the end of the line. They can still learn or change the process or, or fix their errors. It's not a detrimental F, if you want to call it that. It is, oh honey, you, you need to carry the one, or you need to carry, subtracting across zeros, don't subtract up, things of that nature. Giving them that immediate feedback so that they can improve and learn the skill. A summative assessment is more like our district math finals, or for finals in our high schools, where you've learned all the way along, and now we want to make sure you've retained that information, because you've been checked every day, all those little check marks. You've had the common assessments, you've had the topic assessments, where you could go back and improve your work. Now we're going to see, you've had four and a half months of instruction, did you retain that information? And they won't, that's something that they can learn from, but it's not something to go back and necessarily fix. They get a grade for it, there's the grade. It's a summative, it's at the end of their work. Did that answer your question, Dr. McNeil?
Absolutely. And I'll just add real quickly, for a formative assessment, it really drives the instruction. So as, as Dr. Parks and Dr. Eard were talking about, plan and do, plan and do, plan and do, the formative assessment allows you to plan, do, study, and then reteach if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Just real quick, super easy way to remember it, is formative is when you are still forming the learning, and summative is you're summarizing the learning. So those two little key words help me remember all the time, forming or summarizing. Yes, Trustee Rogg, that will be on the quiz.
You do have the assessment department here. So part of the common assessment piece is that we want to have teachers and provide teachers and the collective groups to start looking at student work. Traditionally, and I'm sure it happened to you as students when you were in school, you turned in an assignment, you turned in an assessment, you got a score, you got a percentage, possibly you were ranked in your class as well based on a score in, on an assessment. That's very traditional, and it happens, and it's still going. But we want to start changing that narrative with our common assessments, that those common assessments are not for a grade. It is to inform, as Dr. McNeil, as Dr. Parks talked about, to inform instruction and to inform the student's next action step, to ensure that they learn the content. So when we are talking about common assessments, we want to really dive into and look at student work. What is the process they are taking? What is their progress from yesterday or two weeks ago toward that target? And if they're not meeting that target on the common assessment, we want to provide them interventions based on their work, not on a percent, not on a score, but on their work. We also want the students to reflect on their work and decide what they need to do to make progress on that target. So you get another little example. This is a fourth grade question. We're working on multiplying double-digit numbers with a zero. So I'll give you a few minutes, if you want to do that in your head.
Thank you, Trustee May Berry. Once again, it's always one of those.
So you must have seen the, yes, you must have seen the video, always choose C. But what we want to, yeah, and I would have typically had you do this whole thing, but I know we're running out of time. When teachers receive information back, this is what we want them to spend their PLC time looking at and reviewing when students have taken the common assessment. So this is a sample, and these are actual pieces of student work, as far as these fourth graders who answered the item. Some of them are correct and some of them are incorrect. Some of them said C, like you wanted. We want teachers to start looking at student work, not just right or wrong. And we also want them to begin with success. So student number one, nine, and 19 all got the answer right. They all picked C. So they all picked C, which is the correct answer, but if you look at it, they all did it different. But if you look at it, they all did it different. And this is the fun part. This is the part where teachers can take that work, they can take the name off and show the class. This is how one student did it. Explain to me how they did it. Or what did this student do that helped them get it correct? Because those students who got it incorrect don't know what the students did that did it right. And so they need to have that experience and see, what is it I should be doing because I didn't get it right? So then we look at the students who didn't get it right. And these two little guys both picked D. And if you took some time, you can go through and you can kind of figure out why they picked D. But I didn't want to do that. I wanted them to tell me why they picked D. So they gave us feedback. And student number eighteen said, I did it again. Zero times four equals four, not zero times four equals, I'm sorry. Zero times four equals zero, not zero times four equals four. He learned to remember that zero times four is zero, not four. And then he blamed it on his brain. And then the, number three just said he added wrong, but I get it and I'll get it right next time. So having that information helps the teacher and guides the teacher. I don't need to go back and teach some strategies. I just need to make sure that student number eighteen remembers that anything times zero is zero. So it helps guide that instruction. And I'm going to turn it over to Janice Pearson because her school has been doing wonderful things. And she actually has some other student examples for you.
Yes. So to add on to what Dr. Eard and Dr. Parks have been saying about the PLC process, this has been something that we've really tried to improve our practices with at Bud Beasley. And being the learning facilitator there, I've really been working with my principal to help guide our systems from the top so that we can model some of the behaviors that we talked about in this document of aligning and celebrating improvement and focusing on learning. And something that's been really neat at our school is that my principal, vice principal, and I have the opportunity to provide the directions for the team at every early release Wednesday, very structured to what they'll be working on in the plan, do, study, act cycle, as well as then meet with them, meet with each other after that Wednesday, like Thursday or Friday, to review their information and to build that cultural competency that it's not just a compliance issue. They're not just filling out another form, that they're actually building their capacity to work together and to analyze their student achievement data together and then decide what they're going to do to support the students who don't understand yet or might need just a little tweak, or to also celebrate student successes. One thing we're also trying to work on, again, going back to the compliance, trying to fill out these forms for compliance versus really honoring what students are capable of and having it more, more be a focus on the student learning and what they're doing, as well as teacher successes. And so recently, in November, we switched from a hard copy document with those four to four questions that you saw, and we put it on Microsoft Teams. And so with that, the grade levels are sent out the link with the four to four questions that they can focus on very specifically to either their planning or the data they received from their previous planning session. So up on the PowerPoint, you can see a document up there in the back that says quarter three focus. And together, my principal and I sat and used the district pacing guides and assessment calendar and did some of that backwards planning so that we could provide agenda to teachers and grade levels to really know what they're going to be working on throughout each month, each week, and so that they didn't have any surprises. They could come to the meetings prepared. There were items to consider out of the curriculum guides, and then knowing when they're going to follow up with the data discussion. And so as we've moved to this electronic two-way conversation between the leadership team and our grade level teams, it's been really neat to kind of build that capacity with our, with our grade levels and see their successes at different levels. Some are further along in the PLC process than others, but we're trying to highlight and build that capacity for everybody. So thank you for letting me celebrate some of our success today. Recently, we had Lori Paulson, who's also a member of the assessment department, come down and observe and help facilitate one of our PLC discussions on the data for topics eight and nine from, from Envision. And when we were looking at that in our teacher team discussion just with the grade level, we were really looking at the, what students did well, starting with that piece, but also that distractor analysis piece of where our students struggled. And it was really a great conversation in our teams to notice that they, all the students in every single class struggled with question 10, which when we looked at that and why that was, it was a higher depth of knowledge, and it was a two-step problem, this is third grade. And so the task, task complexity became harder. And so it was interesting for teachers to focus in on what strategies they taught that the students did well and transferred in looking at their data. And then again, what little pieces might just need a little intervention, or what certain groups might need more intensive intervention to, to achieve the essential standard and be able to move on to the next grade level. And so we highlighted, Mary Ellen and I, my principal, Mary Ellen Eriscotta, and I highlighted celebrations and successes in school-wide data, such as our dream box interventions, but also having our classrooms highlight student data and reflection. So this was that question 10 off of unit nine, Envision. Thank you, Sandy. And so this was specifically to the question that most of the students got wrong. And when they looked at their, why they got it wrong and what they might improve on next time, it was interesting to see some of their patterns that the teachers notices, noticed in their grade level discussion, but then having the students notice it on their own so that they could be part of their learning. And one highlighted, the first thing I did was added because the problem said that he deposited money, and then I subtracted because he said he spent the money. So he knew exactly, the student knew what words indicated what operation. Number 10, this was easy because all I had to do was add, and I use place value to help me like this. So the student knew they were lining up the place value correctly, and that was a big part of the discussion. Whereas other students said, I got number 10 wrong because I didn't subtract. And I saw I had to do, was just, I was just in a rush for some reason. And that's where a lot of kids left off with this two-step problem. This student said, I only got this one wrong because I wasn't paying attention to the last part. So again, really highlighting the pattern in their discussion and then knowing that, oh, I can do better if I just pay attention to this last part. And so, and this student said, on the last one, I got it right because I added and then, and then subtracted. I'm excited, I know how to do two-step problems. So that was really cool. One more I'd like to share, question 10 was easy for me because you need to know how to round to solve the problem. I am good at rounding and I know how to do it. So it's just really cool that they can focus in what they were asked to do, know what their learning goal was, and how they can get even better next time. So it goes back to those cycles of improvement that Dr. Eard was talking about. And then how cool for teachers to know that even though most of the grade level and maybe their class scored lower on question 10, what a neat, teachable moment then to go back to their class and share with students and build their capacity so that next time they can pay more attention to those distractors. So, and with that, it was so neat to just celebrate my team that had all their student data from the unit assessment. They had student reflection sheets. They knew what their kids did well. And I just was so excited to have this opportunity to brag on them because again, this is what we're looking for and what we've been trying to lift at our school at Bud Beasley. And some people aren't there yet, but we really wanted to celebrate those that were. So thank you again for this opportunity.
I don't know how I'm going to top that, but that was, that was really cool. So again, very honored to be here. Thank you for having us this afternoon. As you can see, we're extremely passionate about this work. I was introduced to the PLC process back in probably early 2000s when I was a department leader at that other school in Sparks. I won't say the name even though it's up there. I was department leader of, of science. And I went back to Minneapolis for a conference around, around the PLC process and solution tree, and came back and brought it back to my department. Kind of funny how the, the process has evolved, though. Back in the day, we were actually looking at final exams as a biology team, saying, okay, what can we do better next year? Well, what about these poor kids this year? But it has evolved, and we'll talk about it a little bit more to that formative assessment piece and checking for understanding. So anyway, that was kind of my experience with it. When I got hired at Sparks High School in 2013 by our deputy superintendent, Deborah Byersdorf. Sparks High School, as many of you know, was placed in the acceleration zone, the only high school placed in this zone with, I think, 12 elementary schools. And as I was hired this spring prior to coming in, did some observations of the school, and, and I really had a vision of wanting to become a model PLC school. I was at Sparks Middle School for a couple of years, really didn't implement it the way I wanted to at that point. But I thought, here I am at Sparks High School. We got some work to do, early release Wednesdays. And no fault of the administration, prior administration, because a lot of schools were doing this. Teachers were leaving for appointments, they were going to pick up their kids. They were working in isolation in their classroom. They, some were more lesson planning, but it was all in isolation, no collaboration taking place. So coming in, I had that vision of, at some point, I want to be a model PLC school. And hopefully with that process, we'll exit the acceleration zone and, and show the work that we're doing. So I really had to come in that fall and establish what I called some informal norms. And really what that was, was staying at school on early release Wednesdays, not leaving. And, and really, you have to take those baby steps, right, to get to where you want to be and have that outcome that you want. So the same time we were implementing student learning objectives, we were a T4 grant-funded school, Kristen remembers that. And we were doing a lot of work around those, the SLOs and really learning. So I thought, this is a great opportunity to implement the PLC process. So what I said was, stay on early release Wednesdays and just work on your SLOs. And so teachers bought into that, it was that baby step with the vision of the spring. Now I'm going to get my biology teachers together. I'm going to get my algebra teachers together to work on their SLOs together. And I wasn't saying PLC process, I wasn't using those, that terminology, but just really allowing them to go through that process of creating those student learning objectives, which eventually led to part of their evaluation going forward. So that was the first year. The second year, we, we were very fortunate that we became a Title I funded school. So we got some funding, which I was like, all right, cool. Now I can really spend some money around this, this PLC process. I sent my department leaders to some solution tree conferences, my administrators, and they came back and they were just like, we're on board, Kevin. This is, this is some really cool stuff. And you go to these conferences and, and just come back fired up. We were able to hire a consultant, Jack Balderman, a, a principal out of Chicago, who'd been doing PLC work for many years. He actually came out and visited our school for three years, provided us the, the necessary steps and processes we need to put in place to really become a model PLC school. He was very instrumental those three years in the work that we did. Really focusing with our department leaders who ran the PLC teams, their collaborative teams in their departments, around those four questions. What do we want our students to learn? How will you know if they learned it? What if they did and what if they didn't? And so really what the PLC, we really had to share what the PLC process looked like. And that, what that looked like was, again, my biology teachers are getting together. They're creating common formative assessments based on the lessons that they're teaching. They come back the following week, they, they look at the data, they say, trustee Mayberry, your kids did great, mine did not, what did you do? And so we're having those conversations about what's working as far as best practices in the classroom. And it's really simple. I mean, that's really what the process is. We added more to it, as you'll see in a little bit. So it's not a department meeting, it's not ordering basketballs for PE or pencils for biology or algebra, but it's really having those conversations. And also, it's not bringing out a calendar saying, this is what we're going to do this semester. You can do that during your prep period or, you know, after school, before school. But it's really focusing on those common formative assessments and what we call the fresh data every week. So at that point, in year three and four, talk about a rubric. Jack Balderman introduced us to a rubric called the seven stages of a highly functioning PLC, which we have since shared with our district, and really focused around that. I, I had my department leaders kind of go through with their, with their teams and talk about where they are at. We're in year three and four of this, where are we, what stages are we in? What do we need to do to get better? Or are we, are we already there? So those conversations were had, and we were all over the place. And, and you'll see that at, at a high school or maybe a middle school or grade levels. You are going to be all over the place. And so we really had to focus on that loose tight leadership piece where my evaluating administrator, so if I have an administrator overseeing the math department, they were struggling, he would really have to reel that team in and say, this is what we need to focus on. I may be overseeing the science department, I go to the biology team, they're killing it. I'm like, you guys got it. I'm going to go over here to chemistry and work with them. So really had to implement that piece and try to get us all, you know, aligned in the work that we were doing. That year, year four, we actually exited the acceleration zone based on the data, and I attribute it to the PLC process. So we were not under that zone anymore, which was great news. And then in 2017 and 18, I was fortunate enough to send a team out to Chicago and got to visit Jack Balderman's school to see the work that he was doing. And it was really cool because it really validated a lot of the work that we were doing, but also some things that we could implement going forward. Another piece of that, that trip with, with my department leaders and administrators and teachers was we visited another school that he recommended that we go visit. And we spent probably four hours that afternoon with this school, and they were telling us stuff we were already doing. So it was kind of, again, that was, it was boring, but then we left going, okay, we got this. We're, we're doing the right, the right work here. And so Jack, that, that last year, I think he visited us three times. And the last time I was taken to the airport, he said, Kevin, I think you really should consider applying to be a model PLC school. I'm like, really? He said, yeah, you're there. And so him saying that, of course, I'm like, go back to my computer and start applying right away, right? And that year, we were internationally recognized as a model PLC school, one of 13 Title I high schools in the country, and at that time, the only school in the state of Nevada. So talk about celebrating those improvements. We celebrated that, exiting the acceleration zone, model PLC school. So it was really, really cool to be recognized for the work that we had done over those, that period of time. Real funny story, that year, I believe it was that year when we had all the snow days that we had to make up. And in the spring, we canceled early release Wednesdays. Oh, you would have thought my staff was going to have a, you know, just a revolt. And it was really cool, though, because it validated the work they were doing. My department leaders came to me and said, okay, we don't have early release Wednesdays anymore, but Kevin, if you don't schedule IEP meetings or any kind of staff meetings, we will continue the work on Wednesday afternoons. I was like, thank you. That was, it was, it was cool hearing that. So, so here we are going into year six, seven, eight, nine. And you, you kind of reevaluate each, each summer, I would kind of reevaluate where we were at. And I felt we were getting a little complacent around the process as we were moving forward. We got, we got what we wanted, and now are we going to continue the work? Well, I hope so. So we did a PLC reset in 2018 and 19. We had a focus around what we called PLC, pride, love, and commitment. Pride for our school, love for our students, and committed to getting better every day. So we had that PLC acronym. We started to implement equitable and accurate grading practices, which I will talk about here in, in just a few minutes. And another quick funny story that year, I remember, we drove up to school one day and our fire alarm was going off. And I had a math teacher tell me later on, she was in her car, and she hopped into another math teacher's car and said, maybe they'll cancel school today. Maybe we'll have a free day. Oh, wait, it's Wednesday. No, we have our PLC meeting, we do not want school canceled. I told her this morning, I was sharing that story, so. She goes, you always share that. I'm like, yeah, because it's a cute but good story, right? Again, validating the work that we're doing. So with that being said, we've really established a culture around the PLC process, around collaboration. It doesn't just happen on early release Wednesdays, it's happening all the time. Our teachers are meeting at lunch, they're meeting on Saturdays. I can pay them after contract time with Title I funds to meet. And so the work is going beyond those early release Wednesdays. Our co-teachers, so our co-teachers of special ed and EL, they are actually embedded into the PLC process with the content area teachers. So you go into our classrooms, you go into our PLC work, you can't tell who your sped, EL, or general ed teachers are, which is, which is really cool, too. It's part of our interview process when we hire administrators or teachers. We have a question, how are you going to buy into this process? This year was really cool. We actually were, we, we came together as an admin team and said, part of the evaluation process really should be in these meetings. So formal observations this year on our highly effective and effective teachers were during a PLC meeting in the, on an early release Wednesday. We had a template that we followed, we were able to provide the feedback. And it was just really cool to be able to do that as well and know that they're held accountable for the work. So they're being evaluated on it. So that being said, we can go to the next slide. Did you go, do you have one back? Is there one more? The question, yeah, the questions, yeah. So, so part of that PLC reset, we talked about the four questions. But we thought, you know what, we're at a point now, we're, we're in a pandemic. We need to take this a step further, and we need to look at some other questions that we need to address because we have these four dialed. We know what we want our students to learn, we know how we're going to assess if they did it, and what if they learn it and what if they don't. So let's two, three, four, and five. So we added a first question, and especially coming back from a pandemic, we said, how do you connect with your students? What are the relationships that you're building? We feel that is number one, because you're not going to get that, that other work if you don't have those relationships. So that was number one. And then the question number six we added, how are we going to implement the equitable and accurate grading practices? How are we going to know that those students mastered the learning, whether it's on a summative assessment, a final exam, or, or even on those common formative assessments? I had a teacher a couple of months ago said, Kevin, do I have to grade the common formative assessments? I had a teacher a couple of months ago said, Kevin, do I have to grade the common form of assessments? I'm like, that is beautiful, Mr. Pacino, no, you don't, because I don't want you to. It's that summative, that mastery of learning that we really want to take a look at. So now we have six questions for the PLC process. Going over the grading practices, you can see, again, talk about that loose tight piece. What is loose when we talk about grading practices at Sparks High School? Teachers are able to give their finals early, we're going to share some information about that here in a few minutes. Content area teachers can determine what those finals look like. Okay, so my biology team can determine what their final looks like based on what the district obviously is asking as well. Common form of assessments, what do those look like? They have, I'm not going to manage that, you guys decide that. And then talk about homework, do we really have to give our kids homework? They're at school for seven hours a day, do they need to go home and spend three hours on homework? So really looking at that piece, because again, we want to do that formative assessment during class and see what the students are learning. What's tight? So really what we implemented this year is we don't have a hundred point scale anymore. If you look at our teachers' grade books, they don't grade on a hundred point scale. They've eliminated, eliminated the average and what we call the poisonous zeros. If you get zero out of a hundred, it buries a kid. And if that's in August or September, they have a couple of those, they're going to give up. So we've gone to either what we call four or eight point scale, again, depending on what the content area team decided. Teachers can grade on 50 to 100%. I had a teacher come to me and said, when I implemented this at the beginning of the year, how can I give a kid something for nothing? I said, well, then make it a zero to 50 point scale. It doesn't matter, right? 50 to 100 or zero to 50, it's eliminating that poisonous zero. Or even go back to the old model, the A, B, C, D, F model and take a look at that. So as long as we're consistent in the content areas, we're teaching our students, not grading them, if we have that mentality. And one other thing we're taking, we took a hard look at was eliminating extra credit. We remember back in the day, you get to go to, you go to play or a football game, I'm going to give you extra credit. Well, that doesn't show that I know the Krebs cycle or photosynthesis. So those are what's, really what's loose and tight on grading practices. So now celebrating, again, celebrating the improvements, got to have the data, right? So back in 2012, the graduation rate at Sparks High School was 64%. We, in 2017, when we were the model PLC school, we hit an 89% graduation rate, our goal was 90s, we were close, but not quite. But again, celebrating those gains, 2019, 88%. And I was really proud of our graduate grad rate last year with an 86% during a pandemic. And we were the fifth highest comprehensive high school, so super proud of that 86% as well. And then if we look at credits, so again, comparing, I'm just going to say 2019, 2020. Ninth graders who are in five or more credits went from 78% to 94%. And this is when we implemented the grading practices, keep in mind. And then core credit attainment went from 63 to 80%. The work I'm really proud of is on the right here when we take a look at our content areas. So biology credit, now we're talking a full biology credit, I'm just going to give the disclaimer, I know 2020, we had the do no harm and let's try to give the kids credit when we can. I taught biology and algebra, that first semester is way more difficult than second semester. So this is full biology credit for the entire year, went from 72% to 92% in one year. English went from 80 to 86 and then algebra in 2018, 73 to the low 80s the following two years. So again, those grading practices, the PLC process is working. And then taking a look at climate survey data from the year before I arrived at Sparks High School to, when I say, our team arrived at Sparks High School to 2019. This is the staff, I'm satisfied with the amount of time provided on early release Wednesdays, went from 51% to 94%. Is it used productively? 26 to 91. Applying the knowledge gained from that participation on early release Wednesdays, 37 to 88. And then the discussion around early release Wednesdays, this was huge, 12% to 94% being consistent over time. And I think the one I'm most proud of is coming to school every day, went from 62% to 93% with 55% strongly agreeing. So again, there's the data for that. So that's the Sparks High journey and just again, super, thank you, super proud of it. And I love, like I said, I can talk hours on it, so I'll stop now, because we do have a little bit more.
Do you want to start with your?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So again, taking a look at grading practices and early, giving finals early and just to kind of give the disclaimer about giving finals early, what it allows teachers to do. And we did this a couple of years ago, give the finals two or three weeks early, look at the data, see what our students missed, go back and reteach, see what they already have, extend the learning of those students and then give them the final again or the pieces they missed when we have finals in December. And let them retake that piece, again, mastering the learning and let's see what the results are. My chemistry teacher came back after that, he said, Kevin, I love this, I have 150 kids, 149 passed, my class got credit, one of them didn't, but they never came to school. So I thought that is really cool. As you know, with the math department, we do have some stricter guidelines there as around the district finals. So I went to Dr. Eard and her team and had the conversation on what can we do here to really focus on the PLC process and algebra one? Because as we know, we need to do a lot of work around that area. And Sandy and her team was so kind and really focusing on some things that we could do. So I'll turn it over to Sandy.
So this went right along with what Dr. Reeves had been talking about as far as making sure students learn the content. And I, I loved it when Kevin brought this up, that is there a way we can give students an assessment before the final to see if they know it and to really target our instruction during that kind of a review week? Because we're all on the same page, we want to improve student learning in algebra one. We see that as an area that's a real challenge in our school district and I think it's nationwide, actually. We wanted to also involve the teachers in the process. So it would be easy to just give them the final and then give them the final again. But we didn't want to do that for a couple of reasons, some test retest and there's some, there's some issues with validity doing it that way. But we also wanted to build that collaborative effort and that collaborative relationship with teachers in the district who are doing the job every day. So we kind of worked out an idea with Kevin and also with Dr. Parks that my, the math consultant in our assessment department, Becky, would go in and work with the math teachers, those teachers who taught algebra one. She knows what the assessment looks like because she writes it and she gets it approved and goes through a vetting process. But basically she writes it and she knows what's on it. So she could guide the algebra one teachers at Sparks High School to really write and construct good assessment questions that parallel with what's actually on the final. So for about five weeks, five sessions on a Wednesday or four sessions on a Wednesday, Becky went to Sparks, worked with the algebra teachers and worked on developing items that were parallel to the assessment, to the final.
And this was after the PLC time, so we paid them stipend.
Yes, we paid them a stipend and everybody showed up every single time. They had great questions, they wrote great questions and they were involved in this process. Some of the comments I heard were, I didn't know it had to be at this level, I didn't realize the items, I didn't realize this was part of what we needed to teach. There were a lot of interesting conversations and I went and I just sat because I couldn't help them with writing questions. But it was great to watch the collegiality and the collaboration on that subject. So on November 22nd, 23rd, those were the two days before Thanksgiving break, the teachers gave that assessment, the one that they had developed. We told the students they could keep whichever score they wanted. So it was parallel enough and we had some other math folks look at it, that it was parallel enough that if they did really well on that assessment, they could keep that. But we asked them to take both, because we want, we needed the finals, because that's a district final, just for district looking, so we could look at that district wide. And then on December 1st, so over Thanksgiving, we were able to look at the data, analyze it, make tables for the teachers. And we had a two hour discussion with the teachers on the pre-assessment data, separated by topic. And Becky and the teachers were able to target and pinpoint, these students need this intervention. Next week, we're going to intervene with these students on this intervention, these students need this. And they planned a very targeted week of interventions based on the pre-assessment. And then they gave the, they intervened December 13th or the next week, December 2nd through the 13th and gave finals during regular finals week. So the overall results, the results you see are the results, it's the average of each teacher's classroom. And the first column is the teacher, one, two, three, to save some, keep them anonymous. And then the first column of overall performance is the average score. So taking all of the students and all of their courses, and all of their sections together, average that in the first assessment, the pre-assessment, and then doing the same with the final. So averaging all the scores of all of their courses or all of their sections. And all of our teachers increased by at least 10% points, except for teacher two and five, who actually co-teach, like Kevin said, they do co-teach a special ed group of students in that class too, but they made gains. Now, I realize that 31 to 40% on an assessment as an average is not what we want. We want them to improve, we want them to be able to pass, we want them to know the content. We want our students to learn at high levels. But this was a step, it was a step and we didn't start until October, writing those items. Becky has been back, in fact, they asked her to come back to share the results. So they all got to see by student, by teacher, the results, there were phenomenal results. We had some students who increased, I think the highest was a 65%. So we, we had 250 of the students increased some. So we had amazing results as far as increasing. Did they all pass? Not yet, but we're taking a small step. And Becky's back writing items for this year or for this semester, so that they can give that assessment two or three weeks in advance. The teachers have also asked, can we give items right after we teach a topic so that we can intervene earlier? So they're on the process, but it took having the teachers involved and writing those items to realize the value of that piece. I think that's one of the best PDs I've seen, maybe because I was involved and I got to watch them very closely. But it was a fabulous professional learning for those teachers and for us as well, so.
Kevin, did you have anything else?
Just quickly, want to add, this just shows the PLC process works. I think this is, you know, with the grading practices, the common form of assessments, the interventions that we're talking about, extending learning, I think this data shows and yes, we have work to do, but we can see what if we weren't doing the work, where we would be, right? And so just definitely the PLC process is, is working.
Thank you. All right, so yes, we've had many conversations around the rigors of freshman algebra. And we acknowledge as a district that that's a rigorous expectation. And we've come to you as the Board of Trustees and had some questions, you know, why don't we make it a little easier? Why don't we go back to pre-algebra? And as you're seeing, I think we owe it to our students first to really hone in and ask ourselves as educators, are we making the system very clear to lead to success in freshman algebra? So in addition to what we've done at Sparks High, we're having very similar conversations around our essential standards. So our middle schools and high schools are having conversations. Do the essential standards that we're holding kids accountable for in middle school, are those the standards that are going to lead to success in algebra? And also, right now, as part of our process of focusing in on learning, is we want that conversation to be happening for summer school. And this is happening between our principals, so Kevin's talking to Sparks Middle School and who else you have? Dilworth, you know, what data are you getting from the common formative assessments? And we are going to do a jumpstart program, which is specifically focused for summertime, that transition to you're a freshman and you're at a high school now and you're going to be taking algebra. We want to front load a lot of those skills to create better success. Because as Dr. Eard said, we're, we're not happy with where we're at, we, we need to get better here. And that will be a continuous part of our process of focusing on learning and asking ourselves, are we providing the learning for kids to be successful at each next grade level? Just wanted to add that as an update.
And I know our time is running short, so I just wanted to introduce, I think you have this as a handout as well, the loose tight document, Dr. Parks talked about it. As far as a district, if we're a PLC district, what is tight? What are those things that we want everyone to follow? And what are those things that are loose, that are up to the schools to look at? And as part of the Office of Academics, I feel very privileged because I was able to go out to schools with members of the Office of School Leadership. So our assistant, our deputy, our area superintendents, my apologies. And we, there were four main things we were looking at based on our loose tight document. We wanted to find evidence of PLCs in every school, we wanted to find contributing and participating members. So our EL people, our special ed staff, et cetera, so that they would all be part of this process for students. As well as, are they using our curriculum materials, those materials that we supply for them? And are they looking at data? And these loose tight items, we're not just handed to them from de four and saying, here, go do this. We took the PLC design team, we looked at what was suggested and we Washoe-ized it and came up with what would it mean to be a PLC district in Washoe County? So it went from the PLC design team to the principals, feedback, edited, went back, back and forth, until we came up with a document that we could all agree with and agree on.
Bless you. So every good teacher overplans and we have done that. So we're going to adapt and instead of a quiz, we're going to give you homework. Yes, yes, so. Well, we're making a special occasion. So I've noticed some of you jotting down questions and I want to respect those questions and make sure we have time. I don't want to go too much overtime because we were intending to be done about right now. So I want to go right to questions that you might have. Your very simple homework is that I do, as you visit schools, I always feel like our purpose as leadership, as Board of Trustees is always, we have a purpose, right? We are there to support student learning. And if, and if we really believe in becoming a learning organization, on our tight document, you as a trustee should be able to start seeing some of these things. I've heard some of you talk about going and visiting during our Wednesday early release about what you saw. This whole first page of tight, that's what we should be able to have evidence for. We talk a lot about evidence of learning. This is our evidence we want to see in our schools, that they're learning the key tenants of a learning organization. So as we started off the day, we talked about some of the things that we all do. We all monitor progress, celebrate results. So I would encourage you to look at that. And if you see it occurring, everybody loves a pat on the back from a trustee saying, I can see how you're impacting student learning. So with that, we'll open it up to questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I mean, very comprehensive presentation on what PLCs are all about and really what they can do in the school. I mean, it's there, I see some lights, we'll get some and I'm still kind of gathering some thoughts and some notes as well. So thank you for coming, thank you for your work, really thank you for the innovation around how can this be done in Washoe, right? How can, I like that part of it as well, thank you, JJ. So we'll start, I'll just Washoe-ize it, yes, I'll go with trustee Smith and then trustee Minneto.
Thank you, President Taylor, and I do love that term Washoe-ize, so we're going to have to trademark that. Before, I have two questions, but before I do that, I want to recognize Vice President Nicolette, because she has particularly been carrying the flag on PLCs at the board meetings. And so she has been that champion. on PLCs at the board meetings. And so she has been that champion. I have yet to see one myself. I am very committed now to seeing one, but she's been carrying that flag. Okay, I have two questions. One is around the ninth grade math. So I'm not sure if the term would be realignment or recalibration, but when are we expecting to see those changes to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math that then flow into ninth grade, based on that evaluation of the essential standards?
So, every year, as part of the process with essential standards, we will go back out to our educators, the ones impacting student learning the most. And the short conversation is, did we get it right? You know, are these the right essential standards? So right now, as part of the process of really what it is, is aligning our learning to make sure that our students are ready for the rigors of Algebra I, we're asking those questions. Are these the right essential standards to hold and make sure that our students are going to be ready for algebra? And that's, that's all, all students. And again, I talked about the, the jumpstart as well. And so we should be seeing modifications, changes, subtle tweaks to our assessments, as well as what we're focused on for our middle schools, and arguably even our elementary schools.
Thank you. My second question, and I'm going to go back to the slide, so I can reference it. I believe it is slide 24 of 23. It's the Equitable and Accurate Grading Practices. So my question with that is, with the changing to the grading scales, and I think some of this might have happened midway through this school year for some high schools possibly, how does this align with our juniors and seniors applying for college? Like, is this like a national approach? Because I'm curious about submitting for grades, and when one district takes a certain grading approach, and you're competing with a student in Virginia who takes a different grading approach, how does this affect when they look for further education?
So I want our high school principal and our director of assessment to weigh in on this. But the, the real simple reason why these two practices go together is because we are focused on the learning. So, so I, I can't emphasize enough how much of a change in culture that can be in some schools, because often you hear teaching, teaching and learning, pedagogy. But, but we're really trying to shift the conversation to, did our students learn the standards? And as we've looked at our grading practices, most of our grading practices are more about putting kids into order through a class, which, as Dr. Erdd pointed out, it's kind of a very traditional approach, that, you know, I'm towards the middle, and there's somebody at the very front of our class. So we're really trying to hone in on the student learning aspects. And that's why we have focused on approaching grading in a different way. Dr. Erdd and Mr. Carroll, do you have something else to add?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Smith, for that question. I, I do believe this is a national trend. We were, Sparks was one of, I believe, eight high schools that piloted the work of Doug Reeves. And he obviously is nationally known and doing work across the country. But I think it really talks to what Dr. Parks said, in the fact that we want to know if our kids master the standards, bottom line. And if they did, they're going to get the grade for it. If they don't, we're going to see what we can do to make sure they do master that, those standards, and then get them to where they need to be. So more getting away from that grading or the grades, more focusing on the learning, I think, is, is really what we're talking about.
And I, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than adding the part that Principal Carroll talked about eliminating the extra credit. We're eliminating the Kleenex box for 10 points with, we want to make sure that you actually learn this. The Kleenex box isn't going to get you 10 points. Showing me you know how to do it gets you that 10 points.
I was guilty of it as a biology teacher. I had a big box of colored pencils, and a big laundry detergent box, and the more I got, the better I, I was. And the kids got better grades because I gave them extra credit. So I've lived it. I know it. And this, to me, is so much more about student learning.
Well, and we're also eliminating the, you didn't turn that in, so you're getting a zero, and there's no opportunity to recover it, because we're not focused on your grade. We're focused on your learning. So as a systematic approach to your learning, if it's an important concept, and you must learn that, you're not going to be able to get a zero. It's, we won't allow it in this system, that kids can just opt out and fail. We're, we're going to do everything we can to make sure, as I said before, they learn those key essential standards.
I think a good analogy also is, we're having conversations around the AP exam. If a student, let's say, earns a D in an AP class, AP Biology, let's say, but they get a five on the exam, shouldn't they get an A in the class? I mean, they've mastered the material. So a lot of those kind of conversations taking place. So, mastery of learning.
If I may, I just, I know it's, we're going to, we're going to go here to trustee Manetto, but that was on my list as well, to, just to follow up a little bit on that, because what I think is really important is, is not the, hey, right, get the trophy thing. You know what I mean? Because that's the, that's the mindset that you kind of get when it's like, hey, we aren't really going to focus on your grades. Kids are going to get grades, right? When they leave this thing back to transcripts and so on, that's important. I like, it's, it's kind of, it's like, it's a both ends of this thing as well, because you don't get the 10, the 10 points because you, that Kleenex box, I love that, right? You look at the Kleenex box, 10 points and so on. It's really about, are you learning what you're supposed to learn? And when we really talk about what, you know, academic achievement, and really setting our kids up for success, so it's, it's not to say, nope, nope, they don't have grades anymore in the Washington County School District. That's not what's being said. What's being said is, the focus really is being shifted to the learning. Yes, of course, kids have grades. It's a different approach to it. But of course, kids have grades. But it's really about the learning, are you learning the material, as opposed to, I got enough extra credit points, because I got all these Kleenex boxes and so on, so now I can, I can change my D to a C, and it probably should be a D, because I didn't really learn, right? But I got enough Kleenex boxes, I can move it up, because I did the extra credit piece. It's the, did you learn what you're supposed to learn? And I think it's important to note, too, one, I like the system doing everything we can to keep, to help keep a kid from failing. But if a kid does nothing, right, they're still going to fail. So I, I mean, I think it's important, because as I'm writing my notes, I'm like, wait, wait a minute, I think it's important. It's not, it's not that the kid still has to show up. They still have to do their work. They're still, but there are so many supports in place, because you're focusing on whether or not the kid is learning, that it has to be a kid deciding, I'm not doing anything. And, but that, that is still possible, if you don't do anything. But there's systems in place, because it's really about, did the kid learn? Did we teach what we're supposed to teach? Did the kid learn? How do we know? If they didn't learn, what can we do to go back in and help them close that gap, or fill in that gap, and that piece? So I just think it's important, because I can, I can hear it now. Up, they're not doing great. Nope, no, 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 it's not that. A kid wouldn't, no, no, no. It's just really about focusing on, the kid, did this student learn what they're supposed to learn, based upon the Nevada Academic Content Standards?
And it goes back to accurate and equitable.
Accurate and equitable.
Those two pieces.
Right. And, and accurate is what's really, because this is, if I do nothing, the accurate grade for me is a zero. That's, that's accurate, right? Equitable is, we're giving everybody that chance to learn this, if they want to come to class and do the work, and, and, and so on. Yeah, yeah, Kleenex or not, right. Yep, yes.
I just wanted to add on to the equity and accountability piece, that it also helps our learners believe in themselves, that we won't, we're not going to let them fail. Failure's not an option. You're going to have to try really hard to fail. We believe in you, and we have these systems in support to help you get there, and we're not going to give up. And I think sometimes when it's that percentile ranking model, sometimes it's easy to let those ones go, because we're so focused on the ones that are trying. But in this model, we care about all students and all their learning, and we have those supports in place to get them there. So really changes the cultural shift, not only for our buildings and our teachers and leaders, but for the kids to, to believe in themselves and have confidence as learners.
I know I'm interrupting, but dare I say, is that an element, a very important element of social emotional learning?
Yes.
Well, it's to believe in yourself, and knowing that you can, that you will have submit. You still have to do the work. It's not that everybody gets an A. It's not, it's not that at all. Right? You still have to do the work. But if you really want to do the work, and you really want to learn, then we're going to do everything we can to help you get there.
We got your back.
And I, and I, and that is, that is an important lesson. That is an important.
Well, and I want to add just one last point, that as, as we talk about what we take out of the grading system, our students that might struggle and have to repeat courses, if they're getting zeros, and as Kevin pointed out, mathematically, we, we all understand the impacts. It isn't uncommon for a student who's repeating a course, if we don't have some sort of grading system that's grading on learning, that you start to figure out your grade pretty quickly, and realize, okay, wait, I've got this many zeros, I don't know what I'm supposed to learn. And it creates that cyclical, I'm giving up again, I'm not going to learn this. And it becomes futile. And whereas, when we really focus in on the learning, we can put that in front of our students and say, here is where we need you to focus, and what we need you to learn. And you're going to get a grade based on what you learn, not you got a zero, because you didn't turn it in on time. So I, I just think that's critical, as we move forward as a district, that if we're going to talk about equity, and we're going to talk about closing learning gaps, we got to focus on learning, not grading.
No, I just think, I think it's really clear that, 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 I think it's important that, that, that distinction is made. We're not giving up on grading. It isn't that. But we're focusing on learning. You will get the grades you should get, based on what you learned. But let's do all we can to make sure you learn what you're supposed to learn, and commit to that for every child in this district. Because we, because we owe that to them. That, that's that equity piece. So, yes, trustee, trustee Manetto. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much. This is wonderful. You know, you, you all may not know, but years ago, when I started teaching, every, every teacher was an island, and you didn't share what you were doing well. Which, as a young teacher, that was horrible, because I was like, well, what am I supposed to do? Music teachers are pretty good about sharing, though. But, um, some seven years ago, where I was teaching, we started doing some PLCs. And at first, I felt kind of frustrated. But I think it was, but looking back, I'm thinking, it was, it's fabulous. And so four years ago, when I left, I was like, all on board for PLCs. They're just amazing. And, you know, so focused on children learning. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Manetto. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. I have four quick questions. I know we're running out on time. But first of all, I want to thank everybody for your dedication, all you're doing for our kids. It's, it's really inspiring. I, I really appreciate. It's also good to see another handsome old man in the house. Thank you. They're all handsome. Dr. Erdd and I, she was, Dr. Erdd is kind enough to spend a couple hours with me, virtually, so it's good to see you in, in person, on the district final. So, a quick question. We talked a little bit about the interventions, particularly as it pertain to the district final. Is that happening at other schools, other than Sparks High?
Every, that's one of those loose pieces, that the schools are responsible for devising how they're going to do their interventions, how it fits in the schedule, who does the interventions. That's one of those loose pieces. It's just an expectation that there's intervention. But every school will do it differently, because it works differently at every school. Every school has a different bell schedule. They have different resources. So what works at Reno High might not work at Sparks High. What works at Huffaker might not work at Van Gorder. So it, it really depends on their resources. But it's an expectation. So the tight is that students who don't learn it the first time have extra time and support. How that's done needs to fit in the scope and the culture of that school.
Okay, fair enough. Slide 30.
I want to add, real quick, I apologize for interrupting. We are getting interest from other high school principals, who saying, hey, we want to be a part of that. And they look at it, as, as Dr. Erdd said, an opportunity to intervene before that summative final is given. So we are looking at the opportunity to expand the opportunity.
On slide 32, we talked a little bit about the overall results. Is that out of 50 or, or 100?
So the percentages on that slide are out of 100%. Yes. So that is, as much as I don't like percentages, but as far as the, the data, the final, out of 100%. So for teacher one, when she put all of the assessments in the first, the November testing, the pre-test, 21% was the average for the class. But when she gave the fine, I don't know if it's a she, so I apologize. When she gave the final, the average for her class was 31%. That is a 10% gain in a week of intervention. So imagine if they start intervening right away. I'm very excited to see what happens with our spring final. But yes, that is, that is out of 100.
And, and pardon me, I know we're rushed for time, two more questions.
I, I think, I think we'll be, we can't start early, but if we, we can start a little late, if we, if we run, so that, go ahead. These are important questions.
We talked a little bit about the grades, you know, A, B, C. So I, I'm missing, so what, what is the measurement here? Pass or fail? Is it a letter grade?
Yes, still a letter grade. A, B, C, D, R, F. Yes. And, and for example, let's just say we have a teacher who uses a four-point scale. I can talk about the eight-point scale, but that, if you think about our SLOs back in the day, when we were really focused on those.
Student learning.
Student learning objectives, yes. That I mentioned that we implemented, that, that was a focus around an eight-point scale. Some of our teachers go to a four-point scale, where if you don't do it, you get a zero. If you, you know, you got, what percentage is a D? That's going to be a one, so forth, and, and a four would be an A. So rather than 100 points, getting a zero out of 100.
Okay, I appreciate that. And why isn't the PLC being embraced at, you know, across the district yet? Is that something that we're, we're working toward? It's just, it's different styles with principals? I'm curious. It seems to be so effective.
I think it's a matter of learning and exposure. So that, as Dr. Parks talked about at the beginning, for the last two years, we've had Janelle Keating, who's a superintendent, in implementing this district-wide, and in a district in Washington State. I think it's building our own knowledge as administrators, the know-how and the logistics of it. It is quite a shift in thinking from, as Ms. Manetto said, from being a silo and isolated, to now you're going to share, not only what you're doing and your instruction, but you're going to share your results. And you're going to look at the results. And that, that's, I've been in it for a while. If I would have had to do that the first five years of my career, I think that would have been kind of scary for me. So it's, it's building that culture. It does take some time to build the culture.
If I can just add to that, too, and you're hitting on it, Dr. Erdd, trust and vulnerability is huge in the PLC process. And as we all know, that takes a while to establish that. So coming to Sparks High, where a staff was ruined, and trying to build that staff amongst each other, and administration, all that, it takes a lot of time. So I, one quick example, when I was at Sparks Middle School, I'll never forget, we implemented the PLC process the first year. And we were, I was overseeing the English department. We came into a meeting, and our English department leader looked at one of our other teachers, who's now a principal and an amazing leader, but looked at her, and they had, in, in middle school, the data, you have your names on there. And it was the CRT scores. And it, and he looked at her and said.
Criterion reference test.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't even know if I knew what that said, but anyway. And he, he held up the data and said, what are you doing? Because I want to know. You know, I've got pretty good data here, but you're killing it. And it gave me chills. So I'm like, there's the PLC process right there. So it's that trust and vulnerability as well.
And I'll just add, just super quick. So this is a three-year initiative, trustee Mayor Barry. It's a three-year initiative, and we started in 1920. And we really started putting emphasis and efforts and resources behind an entire district of PLCs. And so this year, 2122, is actually the third year of implementation. And as you know, it typically takes three to five years to really get a strong component of implementation, and so that it becomes ingrained in the system. What Troy was, or Dr. Parks was talking about earlier, about systemized, really takes about three to five years to get something fully ingrained. three to five years to get something fully ingrained, and so that people buy in and have that trust, and then see the results.
I have to add, so there was this brand-new superintendent, and there was this brand-new chief academic officer. And your question is a great one, because, as we said, we had been doing it for a long time, but a lot of our schools had been doing that PLC light, where we're, we're very happy. We talk about student learning on occasion, but we don't really use it as a, as a driver to become a learning organization. So, you know, I don't mean to be negative, but I want to be transparent. Sometimes when we have a superintendent at the top that says, you're, you're going to do it this way, you're going to do it this way, our job is to focus on, as a leadership team, we focus on what that superintendent wants. When Kristen became our superintendent, we had very in-depth conversations about what was going to be best for the district, and there was a strong commitment that this is where we're going to plant our flag, so to speak. So, where on a huge, a big district like ours, becoming systematic about learning, it's going to take a long time. But, but we do, we could take you to schools right now, Kevin's included, where you'd go. That's very evident, that those children are going to be learning, because I can tell by the conversations their teachers are having, that they're focused on learning. But, but it's going to take us a while to get there as a bigger district.
You guys are killing me. You're killing me.
I'm sorry. I just have to say, too, that it's, it's just as important for our teachers. It's a really hard job, and as Trustee Minado said, it's, it's building that capacity for our teachers to be in that vulnerable state of mind and have a growth mindset and be in that place as a learner, just like we ask our students. And so, when we can come together and highlight successes, like, what are you doing? It really lifts each other, too, in implementing that culture of celebration. So, thank you for looking at that tight document and, and highlighting and celebrating our successes when you go out at the schools, because you are going to see variations, even in one building, but it's important to highlight the successes. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Smith.
Thank you so much, President Taylor. So, thank you so much for this whole presentation. There is one of you, though, that I wanted to really emphasize, and that's Ms. Pearson. So, this board and different topics, we've been talking about building learning facilitators, and there's been active discussion around that. So, I want to say thank you for coming and demonstrating what is just one part of what a building learning facilitator does, and you showed us that. So, thank you for presenting and demonstrating that.
That's so important to me. Thank you.
No. Microphone. Sorry. I know, that was really bad. I'm sorry, but people need to hear.
I really appreciate that, and just like you can see my emotional reaction, I'm not even in the classroom, but I can see how hard our teachers are working and how hard our principals are working. And it is a second-order change. It is going to take three to five to 10 years, but it's so important that we celebrate our successes, and when our teachers can come together on a Wednesday and know the expectation is to be vulnerable, but know that they're going to celebrate and lift each other up, and that they're supported through all the systems, including the Board of Trustees. So, thank you for that and acknowledging our baby steps as we go. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. I did have, I got a chance to chime in. I did have just a question or two myself. I'll just hone in. Can you talk a little bit more about the, let's see, no, I can ask you that one-on-one, Principal Carroll? I'll just ask, it's really, I think, this is the kind of work, thank you again, right? This is the kind of work that as we look at where we, where, when we see where our numbers are, where we want our numbers to be, and so on, there's, there's some things that we have to do differently, right? So that we're, we're serving, we're better serving our students, right? Which is, and better supporting our teachers, right? And better meeting the expectations of our community, of our families, and, and all of that. And this is a, this is a different, this is a different way of doing things. And when you, we can't just keep doubling down on what we've been doing and say, let's just get better. I mean, right? We, we got to do some things differently. And the thing that I can appreciate is, as much as some of this is different for us, it's a different way of looking at some things, and, and so on, just going back to grading, you know, we, you had 15 conversations about, so do kids get grades? They do, but we want it, you know, just for, so we can get to a place and feel good about that, and that's important, right? We all had them. But it's, it's, I think it's, it's, it's challenging, because it's a little different, but to see some of the results, it's like, I mean, those were tremendous results. Now, granted, we want them on a larger scale, grant definitely, but when you go from, I mean, when there's a 50% improvement in some of those scores, like, it has the potential to really be the kind of game changer that we want in our district, so that we're getting better results for our students. Because it's not that teachers aren't working hard. I mean, especially now, they are busting their tails in the building. You guys are doing amazing work. So, what else can we do to help with that, to support that, and put ourselves in a position where we can get some really impactful results for our students and really help our teachers? Because they, they're sharing the load, really, to, to really help them with that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about this, because it's, as much as it's different, it's a different way, just doing the dang math problem for different ways. I'm still like, wait a minute, there's one way to do that problem. There's one way, right? I mean, that, I mean, that, I mean, that's, you said, Carrie, the one earlier. Thank you for saying that, because that's, that's the only way I know how to do that, right? So, that's different, too, but just, so thank you for giving us, like, you know what, tears? This is drastically different, but we want some drastically, some drastic improvements, because people are working so hard, and we're making some steps. We're making some steps, but this gives us a chance, can we make more? Right? Can we, can we make more? Can we go further? So, I get excited about it, because you know what, Angie? This is a shift. It's a mind shift, a mind, a mindset shift, but it can really be something that we're looking to kind of grab on. So, so I, thank you for that. All right. I think we're good. So, thank you very much. All right, well, all right. Thank you, we appreciate it. JJ, as we get close to wrapping this meeting up, any public comment as we close? None? All right, no public comment as we close? We're going to close the work session, everybody. I know we've run over from our board meeting, so give us about, what do we need, 10, 15? 10? All right, and then we'll get started right away.